Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Ah, wait. Don't submit a mission statement first. Oh, I'm ready to go. That's okay. I'm sorry. Sandy, can you do our mission statement and our roll call?
Yep. At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Candace?
Here.
Duff?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Angelo?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I am also here. We have a forum.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda. So move.
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move.
Support.
Thank you. Mr. Walmsley.
Okay, going over resignations and retirements. Anna Gascoigne, Assistant Cook at the principal resigned. Jalina Pace, she would be one of our new hires for the Richmond First Robotics Coach. Ava Spence is hired as childcare. Notice of appointments from previous, these individuals are already hired by the board. Emma Lee Collis, School Improvement Chairperson. Ed Delore is filling the Fall Evening Event Port facilitator. He's also for a junior class advisor. And Kathleen Lemon for the freshman class advisor. There were no error brought to my attention regarding the September 25th or the October 2nd special meeting, or that first one was a regular meeting. And I don't believe we've had any questions regarding the claims in account.
No question. Any questions from the board?
Yeah. For the First Robotics Coach at the middle school, what kind of help do we provide that person who's coming in for that job?
They'll be meeting with the, probably Renee and the administrators to go over the program and what's needed in the program.
So that's what, that's what we're going to do for this person?
I will make sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our instructional spotlight.
I'm going to turn over to Staples and the administrative team.
Hello.
Good evening.
We're going to be going over our 22, 23 data from our High States testing. I will start off with the district level view of our data, and then I will go ahead and hand it off to our director of student support services. So to begin, you can see how we've compared to ELA. This is our M-Step. It is taken grades three through seven. We are in blue. State is in orange. County is in gray. You can see for the most part, we are above state and county averages. Grade six and seven, we are below state and county averages. However, I think it's important to note that in sixth and seventh grade, both grade levels increased. Sixth grade by 8.5% from last year, and seventh grade still increased by 13.2%. So we are still trending upward in the, in the right direction. This is our trend data over the last several years. It is actually five years worth of data, although we did not have numbers for the 19 and 20 school year because of the pandemic. You can see that once again, from last year to this year, we are making grade improvement.
I have a quick one.
Yes.
Do ever, do we ever do a cohort check as far as to follow those third graders up?
Yes.
Or fourth graders?
When, for example, we start talking about our sixth grade data, I'd like to discuss that.
Okay. Thank you.
So here is a great example. So that M-Step map, you can see that we have great gains in our third grade. Fourth grade is slightly below state and county averages. We're right slightly above state and county in fifth. Sixth grade, however, we've been watching this cohort for several years. If you recall, two years ago, or even last year, we were reporting on our fifth graders, and the year before that, reporting on a very low fourth grade cohort that needed a lot of additional help. That is this current sixth grade cohort that we are working with in order to increase their goals. And Ms. Morelino has a very distinct plan for that specific cohort, because we do go through the years and look at that as well. Sometimes there's more needs in some groups than others. Once again, here is our data map. We had a slight decrease in third, increases in fourth, fifth grade, decreases in sixth and seventh. Once again, looking at that cohort data, looking at what those kids individually need, as well as being able to put in place a solid plan for mathematics as we went through our curriculum review cycle from math last year, will directly impact sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Here is our PSA T map scores. You can see that we scored above state averages, slightly below in ninth, and slightly below in 10th grade. Here's the PSA T EBRW, which is evidence-based reading and writing. You can see the eighth grade scored well above state averages. Ninth grade and 10th grade all scored above state average for PSA T. There's quite a big difference of the M-Step to the PSA T. M-Step science, we are proudly above state and county averages in all areas of math, or all areas of science for the M-Step. And we also made great gains in all areas as well. So there is an improvement every single grade. Fifth grade increased by 6.8%, eighth grade increased by 10%, and 11th grade increased by 2.8%. So not only are we above state, county in all the testing grades, but they also made increases from last year to this year as well. Same as social studies, we are still above state, county in fifth grade, above state, county in eighth, we're below. But if you look at the actual increments, we're really close in 11th grade. They still made great gains though. Fifth grade improved by 7.2%, eighth grade increased by 12.2%. I mean, that's like a massive improvement in one year. In 11th grade, even though they're slightly below state, they still made a 17.7% increase from last year's score. Here is our SAT, the EBRW, where we scored compared to state and county, and then math. Once again, we still made great improvements from last year to this year. We were at 12.1% in mathematics last year. This year, we're around 22.7%. Still not where we want to be, but still making improvements year to year.
And the new curriculum should be helping with that, right?
And the support classes that we invented for the first time, the change of scope and sequence that we're going to see starting this year, where we're going to have consistent scopes, algebra one, geometry, algebra two, and then we're stopping with algebra one in the seventh grade. Here is our SAT trend data. So you can see that we, over the last, from last year, we made a grade increase. And then from last year, we had, we had an increase also in the EBRW. So some points of pride. Some points of pride, talking about how seventh grade made positive gains in ELA, talked about their proficiency going up by 13.2% in ELA. Seventh grade improved in math by 12%. 11th grade showed positive gains. They increased proficiency by 2% on the EBRW and 10.6% math, as well as an increase in 8.9% in math and an increase by 12.4% in ELA. That's not a timer for me either.
Your three minutes are up.
Our next step, obviously, we're going to continue our district and school improvement process. We're going to continue adopting and implementing research-based curriculum. We're going to utilize high-yielding instructional strategies, continue essential standards work in the core subject areas. This year's ELA, super excited. Operate professional development and instructional coaching opportunities to staff, and increase student engagement with the utilization of KIGA structures. And that's kind of the big picture of our data next steps and points of pride. I'm going to give it up to Ms. Amy Rio, who's our Director of Student Support Services.
Welcome. Ms. Amy Rio, for those of you who have not met me yet, I am the Director of Student Support Services, and I have enjoyed the last month and a half getting to know the staff from working in all three buildings. So I'm sharing data with you from the previous year. The thing that I really want us to focus on is that although there's lots of red, which I know is alarming, when you look at things, there is gains that are happening. And so when you look at the M-Step and the math for grades three through seven, we are looking at economically disadvantaged, which would be our Title I, 31A students, English learners, and also our Special Ed students. So we're combining all three of those categories together when we're comparing for seventh grade. The points of pride that I want you to notice is that in ELA, we have a 14.5% increase in advanced ELA and M-Step scores. So we have actually moved kids into the blue, who represents advanced. Green is proficient. Yellow, partially proficient, and then red is not proficient. So even though we're still working to move that red into the yellow, we're seeing that those things are changing and growing. When you look at our math, we went from a 50.9 increase from not proficient to partially proficient. So we are moving our children. The next steps for myself personally is I've been looking at data, meeting with the different departments, spending time in classrooms, meeting weekly with teams, so we can start really digging into that data, and I can do some trend analysis to see exactly what we need for our ELL students, our Title I students, and our Special Ed students. So that will be a continued piece for me as we continue to look at progress monitoring. Our goal is to close the achievement gap, obviously, but what we really want to start to do is move our kids that are in the red to our yellow, and then our bubble kids, which we call our yellows, into our green. Okay? Questions?
Take a minute, look at that last bullet. 15.9% increase in the, in the group that is not proficient to at least getting them to partial. That is a statistically huge increase in growth.
And what that proves too is that the interventions that we're using
Are working.
are working. And so that's what we're going to continue to look at. Typically, when you're moving students from those areas, you're looking from your Tier Two interventions, Tier Three is Special Ed, but Tier Two encompasses your Title I, your 31A, some of your ELL students even. So we really have to start to look at how we move and continue to push into that partially and then into proficient. So it is, I think, a wonderful gain, and it speaks well to your district and things that you're starting to do here. All right, so we move on to fifth and eighth grade science. Again, we're using those same three categories, R E L, economically disadvantaged, and Special Ed students. There was a 14.5% increase in advanced science M-Step, so we actually pushed kids into the blue, which again is huge for our students. And so again, I will start to look at all those students who are economically disadvantaged, are we moving, are we pushing, what's working in our Title I, where are we at with our special education, what kinds of interventions do we continue to use, and really look at our data so that we can start to implement that. Special Ed is a nice piece because there's individualized programs, and so we can really get into those systems by looking at their needs. And our ELL students, I'm going to continue to work with our ISD to kind of educate our staff into what that means, and then use our parapros and provide them with training so that they can continue to understand the things that we need to do to push those kids forward as well. Social studies, again, I went ahead, 41.9% of our students again went from not proficient to partially proficient in our M-Step scores for our fifth and eighth grade. So another huge, huge jump for that. And then in our social studies, we had 15.5% increase in social studies M-Step scores beginning for our fifth to eighth grade. So when we look at that, we are showing gains, and we just need to continue to look at pushing those kids out of the red and into the yellow.
And if you remember, this population of students, by definition, they're in these groups, whether they're at risk for Title I or for Special Ed, because they're at risk of not meeting state standards, or they have a deficit, which puts them at a slight disadvantage than just a regular student. So to make these gains from IC, this is huge, and it shows about the team, the staff that we have in place, really focused on how to get kids moving. I'm at continual.
Absolutely. And I think again, when I'm looking at individual scores, our economically disadvantaged students, our Title I programs in our elementary and fourth and fifth grade are really working. They're showing gains. You'll hear that as well when the elementary speaks, but it's, that's, that is a process, it's a place that is really working. And so I'm excited to continue to work with the Title I team as they are pushing our kids forward.
So then the idea is those that stayed in the red, that's what we're looking at?
We're going to target that.
Look at those kids, how, how did we miss getting them to move? Is basically what you're saying.
We want to really look at our red, and then we really want to look at our yellow, because those are our, those bubble kids is a term we hear all over the place. But it really is, we put a lot of emphasis on our Tier Three and our Tier One and our Tier Two is really one of my goals for this district as we're coming to implement things, especially as you start to move in to your upper elevators, your sixth, seventh, eighth grade. Our Title I isn't there, so what are we doing to implement things that will help those students? And again, when you have the time, sit in need and to go over data, it's powerful when staff looks at it, it's powerful when students look at it, and so those are the kinds of things that we're working on as I meet with each of these departments.
Can you go back one more?
Go back one. Is someone else pushing us or is it me?
No, you pushed, and I asked a question. It's the other way. One more. One more, one more bit.
You're going forward.
Sorry.
You're okay.
I see.
Because the slide you skipped was very important.
Yes. There we go. No.
Right there.
There we go.
All right, you're having it. All right. So we're moving on to our eighth and 11th grade, PSA T for our eighth graders, and then SAT for our 11th grade, evidence-based reading and writing in 2023. Again, same three categories, economically disadvantaged, ELL, and Special Ed students. There was 112.9 increase in students meeting the college board level benchmarks for evidence-based reading and writing scores for our grades nine and 10. And there also was a 49.5 increase in our PSA students in ninth and 10th grade for meeting their math.
Just look at the color.
Yeah.
There's no red in that, so it's a significant, I mean, it's a significant improvement.
And again, new to the district, I'm learning, like, working with staff and talking, working with the curriculum director to see what's happening, but a lot of that, just so, so conceived ones that we're starting to put together, is you can see that you're looking more at our curriculum based on standards rather than just getting through our content, and it's making a huge difference. And again, next steps, N W E A is a powerful tool for us when we look at students, AIMS Web for progress monitoring. It's huge to me to be in classrooms and to work with teachers, model, almost act as a coach in some ways, and just look at our individual plans for students so that we can look at their data to determine those interventions. And our reading and writing scores, we had an increase of 8.9%. We had a 9.9% increase in partially proficient to proficient in our math, and we had a 15.5 increase in our social studies scores for our fifth and eighth graders. Again, our math, you can see, there's a little teeny tiny blue, but we also have, we have a decent sized green and some yellow. So our goal for that would be is to push our red, move those kids into yellow, and where yellow would turn green to blue.
Going the wrong way.
Gosh, you guys. Honestly.
Nope. Nope. Hit the other way. Other way. Nope, stop.
I have a headache. I'm a bad girl. So any questions for me now? I thoroughly entertained all of you. I gave you a great impression, I hope. Again, thank you. I am very excited to be a part of this district, and I am, I've been very impressed with what I've seen and look forward to working with the staff here, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I will practice.
So I'm next. Obviously, I'm here to share information about specifically Richmond High School in general. And so some of this might seem somewhat repetitive, but kind of looking at the data from different perspectives. I'm going to go through our state assessments, but then also some local assessments, N W E A specifically here in the building. So as you can see with the pie chart, over 55% of our students met or exceeded the benchmark on the SAT English test. So again, that is last year's juniors, our current set of seniors that are in the building right now. That was an increase, and I know now not to use green, because I swear it's a really dark green, but it looks super light up there, but that's 4% higher than the state average, and it was a three percentage point increase. So what I mean by that, as you heard some larger percentages shared in the previous slides, last year's kids were at 52%, this year's kids were at 55%. And so again, we saw a larger percentage of our students either meeting or exceeding that benchmark. Our next steps of what we're going to be doing this year is, as Ms. Staples stated, we're going to be working with the MISD consultants. We have both full day and half day professional development scheduled for them, where we're going to go through the same process that we did last year with the math. So identifying our standards, what are our ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade English classes teaching our students, and just making sure that all of the content that should be taught in the classroom is being taught, and making sure that it's being taught in a sequential order that makes sense. One of the largest changes that we're going to see, and actually on October 18th, we're going to get our first look at it, is that the state is going to, or college board is going to digital assessments. So this year, the SAT will be all digital, and it is changing the format of the English and Language Arts. So in the past, our students were used to reading a really long passage and then answering five or six questions about it. That is no longer the case. This year, the questions are going to be structured where they're each individualized questions, and what we've been told is that we should expect no more than 125 characters in each passage. So we're talking about short paragraphs of information that then we're asking the students to respond to, and each question is individualized, so we're not able to require the students to do reading and then going back and kind of looking for the answer. So I am really excited. We've been working with the students on
I'm excited too.
We've been working with the students because again, this is going to be new for not only them, but us as the building, as well as teacher proctors. And so we are having, once again, all of our current 11th grade students take the PSA T and MSQT test this fall, just to give them an opportunity to check out what the new SAT looks like. And I also will say is that they've cut down on the number of questions, and so it's much shorter. And so hopefully, that also will provide a more, a better, I guess, so to say, testing environment for our students, so we can get maybe a better look at that data.
That's fascinating.
Yeah, and people were in shock. We just went to a, not a webinar, a training at the MISD. I mean, people's jaws were on the ground, like, what do you mean? We've been testing paper and pencil long passages for so many years, and now we're, everyone will be on their laptop, and like, if a kid has a tech issue, they literally are allowed to pick up their laptop and walk out of the testing room and like, go get tech help? So it's just like all of these, kind of what we view standardized testing to me, college board is changing that. So we will see how it, how it goes in October, but I'm glad that will give us the opportunity to then see how we're going to implement it for our ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students this fall, because all three will be testing that way. Now
Real quick, Andrea, did they know? Did SAT know this, and were we prepared, or is this just another jump again, like the state does?
No, they've been, they've been putting and pushing information out about this for quite some time, so we were well aware of. They were allowing in the fall for students to still take paper and pencil. We made the choice to make the digital switch, because I didn't want the spring to be the first time that kids tried to take this test on the computer. They're used to it with M-Step, but, and we'll kind of talk about this, I don't want to jump too much ahead and talk about the SAT, but simple things like all students have access to the calculator on all portions now. So some of these accommodations that we were seeing by going digital, we're providing all students with those accommodations of constant use of a calculator, constant use of Zoom features and highlighting, and some of those tools that help kids take tests will now be available to everyone because it will be digital, and we wanted to obviously test those features out with the students before they took the actual High States test in 11th grade.
Are they doing four sections?
No. So now the test is actually set up, it's, it's somewhat four sections. They'll take the English and Language Arts. Within English and Language Arts, there's going to be two modules. Module one is the first test that will be your basic questions that everyone will get, they'll be randomized. Module two will automatically start when they finish module one. Module two will be based on the student's performance in module one. So now module two for the test will adjust itself to how the students performed in module one. So we'll start seeing some more individualized data for the students. They'll take a short break, and then math will be the same thing. All math is calculator now, so there's not the non-cal calculator calculator version, and the same thing will happen. It will be module one, there'll be a lot of generalized questions that all students will get right away when they finish module one. Module two will automatically load on their computer, and that then will be based on the progress they made in module one. So according to college board, they say that the scores will turn out the same. I guess we don't really have any proof. I do believe that they have been using the digital form from what I've heard over in Europe prior to this, and so some of the feedback, but really, the first, I think October 4th was the first day that you could test for the digital, and with that being count day, I don't know of any school districts that did. But as we, you know, as I talked with my colleagues in other districts, just kind of hearing how, how it went for them, definitely will be, you know, looking for that feedback to see when the scores come out, like, did we see huge changes? Did we see, you know?
Is it still timed?
Yes, so it's still timed, but what is not timed is how long they spend on module one and module two. So they'll get one chunk of time, and I don't remember if it was 65 or 70 minutes.
So it's going to be shorter.
It's less, it's less questions, so they're giving students more time per question. I think it went up to like 1 minute and 19 seconds per question now. It used to be like 1 minute and 3 seconds. So they cut down on the questions, and then they've got the time. But yeah, it, it will be interesting to see. So what our results look like, we will, I think, depending, now if they're good, then we're going to say like, who knows, you know, us, but depending if they're not, then we'll have like, oh, well, it was a different test. But they say it's supposed to be the exact same results either way, but I guess time will tell.
Well, thank you.
So, will the SAT catch up? So on the other side of things, and you can't see the blue bars there, maybe if you look at the ones behind me, but the second set of data that we look at is N W E A. And what you're seeing here is that our N W E A did not meet where it should have in terms of the growth. So if you look at those orange triangles, that is where the students should have been at the end of the year. What you What you will see is, is that the blue bars is where they ended up. And so the number, the percentage of students who met the growth percentage, for example, in reading was 49%, 10th grade 24%, 11th grade 47, and grade 12 73%. The same thing on the right-hand side, you can see the language use for ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. That data is not available for 12th grade based on the NWEA system. But again, none of our grades met the level of growth that we anticipated or that we wanted them to be at. One thing that I can say, and just having been a part of the testing process for a really long time, one of the things that makes students perform is that level of comfort and that positive environment within the classroom. I think that we know that there was a lot of teacher movement last year. We had students that switched classes. And so some of our students tested with three different teachers when they took the NWEA in the fall, then in the winter, and then in the spring. And so I think from my perspective, we saw growth. While it might not have been the growth that we wanted to reach, I do believe that by putting in smaller class sizes, streamlining the number of props with our teachers, and then also using the common planning time to really look at the data, that my goal is and that the hope is, is that this data will then, for this current school year, more accurately meet where they, the students should be at the end of the year versus where we experienced this past year with the reading and the language use.
Andrea, are you seeing any kind of pushback from the kids that they don't want to take this test? That they don't care about this test? It doesn't have a value or a meaning?
I think, I think you see that with a lot. I mean, not even just NWEA. I mean, you see kids, I don't want to go to college while I take the SAT. I don't, you know, I'm not going to go to school and go write-
Are you doing anything? Are we doing anything to discourage that?
I think, I think it goes back to those conversations with the students of what the importance of this is, how we use the data. So for example, if you're having conversations with a student about why it was suggested for them to be in a support math class, and they're like, well, that's not my real NWEA score. Well, that's what I have to go off of. That's one of the data points that we use. So I think that as we continue to talk to the students, set that positive environment. I know one of the small things we did with SAT last year is that we realized we were allowed to serve the kids lunch. It seems like such a small thing, but gone were the days of like testing until 1:15 and the kids not, you know, getting a granola bar. We realized we were allowed to give them lunch. We had lunch boxes, lunches can come in, and the kids were like, that was a great break just to kind of clear our heads, take the 25 minutes. So anytime that we can do positive, you know, small things like that, I never thought I'd hear so many, you know, positive compliments about a turkey sandwich, but they loved it. And so those things really, I think, can make a difference. And so our goal with the NWEA, whether it's an in-class assessment or state testing, is always to try and have them see the value and the meaning. And the more that the teachers also share that information with, this is how we're using NWEA in the classroom, I think that will help them as well.
Thank you.
Andrea, before you go, I just want to point out and remind the board, smaller class sizes. The seventh period day has allowed us to add other sections. So for instance, in Algebra I, we might have only had four sections in the past. You divide it by 120 kids, you got 30 kids in a section. We're now creating five of those sections, five of the English 9s, five of the, to bring the class sizes down to allow more reasonable instruction with the teacher. I mean, it's, having 30 kids in a class is very challenging. So that's, the move to a seventh period has allowed us to do that.
So next, talking about math. In our SAT math, 23% of our students met or exceeded the benchmark. Again, not where we necessarily want to be, but that was 11 percentage point increase from last year. And so when I stood up here last year, we had scored around the 12% mark. And being able to almost double that, I think we were at, you know, if you look at the percent increase, it was almost close to obviously 50%. But we really are excited about the new implementation of the math resources. At the high school, there is a computer component that I know that the teachers have been using that has been great. And they just really are engaged in the math that's going on. A lot of our, a lot of our classrooms are using cooperative strategies, whether it's through CAGEN or just, you know, activities to get the students more engaged in the math. So that is definitely something that I look forward to seeing the improvement on. Another thing we've talked a lot about is the 7 through 12 scope and sequence change. Obviously, that's not something that impacted this data, but one would guess that the next steps would be to continue to improve the data. And then, like I talked about already, going to the digital assessment, the question and the structure change, also all students access to calculators. The calculator that the students will be able to use on the SAT math is Desmos. That is built into the math curriculum that we currently are using, or the math resources we're currently using. So our students are getting familiarized with that in-computer calculator tool, however you want to call it, on a regular basis. So they're using it already through their math program. So when they see it on the PSAT or the SAT, it's not going to be a unique format to them. Whereas some districts are having to implement that separately and do Desmos lessons, our students are getting it on a regular basis through the curriculum resources that we're currently using. One last thing I want to comment on is the mean. So the mean, think about it as the average. When we looked at the 11th grade data from the previous year, the mean in the math score was a 430, and it increased 19 points to a 449. And so again, I have one last slide that I'll talk about, kind of talking about the mean. And that's a good indicator to use because it's showing where that student's average is when you're talking about the whole group of kids. And so that's just something to point out. Again, with the NWEA, unfortunately, we showed growth in all of the categories. So ninth, 10th, 11th grade all showed improvements in the math, but it did not meet that orange triangle. And so talking about the smaller class sizes, streamlining the number of props for our teachers, and then obviously building in the support classes at the Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II level are all things that we've done to hopefully further support the students. There was a percentage, 9th grade was 40%, 10th grade was 48, 11th grade was 53, and grade 12 was 38% that met that growth percentage. So we do have a large group of our students that are meeting where they should be. But then we obviously want to also target those students that aren't and figure out how we can better support those. And doing things like using the NWEA data to support the students, whether it's through suggesting tutoring resources, getting them signed up with Khan Academy, having them, you know, enrolled in a support class. Those are all things that we're doing to address those issues. Now, the final slide that I, oh, no, I need two more, sorry. The social studies for the MSEP. So the students take the social studies and the science tests separately. So they take the English and the math through the SAT or PSAT. At an 11th grade only, they take the social studies and the science through MSEP. 32.5% of our students are at or above proficient. That was a 4.9% point increase, so 4.9 percentage points higher than the previous year. Again, things like common planning, the social studies group. When we first met earlier this month, they decided that they wanted to make a commitment to doing a little bit more writing in their classes. It's something that a lot of the veteran teachers talked about, is something that was powerful some years back. And so they are looking at creating a common rubric that they're going to use for student writing assignments in social studies. Whether it's a short passage that the students are writing or something longer, they really wanted to make that the focus that they were going to be working on. And so that's something that they are going to do, obviously, again, through the data analysis that is taking place across all the different content areas. And finally, science. 39.8% at or above proficiency, a 3.6 percentage point increase. So all of our subject areas, English, math, social studies, and science, all of them improved from the previous year. And so no, we're not looking at cohort data with this, but we are looking at gains, in some situations, double-digit gains in terms of how, what percentage of our students are proficient in our four core subject areas. And so I think that was one of the celebrations that I was happy to share with our staff members because you think like, oh, last year was just so long, it was terrible, all those things. But like when you look at it, you know, we got a lot of good work done. And so I think continuing to remind them of that is important. So with the science group, what they're looking at is, we currently, there was a switch over right before I came that physical science is no longer the ninth grade class curriculum-wise that the students will take. And so students in ninth grade take the biology, 10th grade chemistry, and then 11th grade, they really have the opportunity to explore a wide variety of sciences at their junior year based on the MME graduation requirements and the Richmond graduation requirements. So what the science department is focusing on this year is they really want to make sure that all of the standards are getting covered for all of the students. Because what they realized was, with a primarily new department, they just wanted to make sure that someone has ownership to make sure that the students are getting exposure to all of the standards and ensuring that they're integrated into all of our science classes. So that's really going to be the next step that they have this upcoming year as it relates to science is just ensuring that their scope and sequence with kind of the changes of the classes that happened a couple of years ago. I know we've been transitioning out of that, but that is, all the students are having those standards talk to them. And then following up about any identified gaps based on what the data shows. Like, is there a specific part of the content standards that aren't being covered that they need to focus on? So that was what they kind of chose to make their next steps for the year.
Andrea, a quick question on that. Are they doing, like in our science classes in biology, are they hitting any physics in there? Any, is that in the curriculum? Is that how it's built in?
So, so yes, so the way the-
Like they're getting some more science. They're getting some in that biology class.
So yes, so that, that's what the conversation that they're starting to work on is. So things like ecology. The ecology unit can be the ecology standards. It makes sense for those to be built into the freshman biology class. The physics teacher said, well, astronomy, like I've got those astronomy standards in physics, but then not everyone takes physics. So we need to ensure that a student that doesn't take physics still is having those standards covered. So that's where they're at right now, is kind of just taking that look of, okay, what do we have in place? And is there something that we are, are missing? So-
Yeah, because if, if they are missing that piece, they're not going to get it that junior year.
Depending, exactly, depending on what they took. Exactly. So junior that would perhaps take AP Chemistry versus junior that takes Environmental Science, their third year exposure would look different. So. And it was interesting, when we did our data analysis as, during our common planning, they anticipated that the Earth science standards would be the lowest performing score, and it actually was the highest. So the most recent juniors, what they thought was the lowest was the highest. And that kind of steered that conversation because what they realized was, is a lot of those standards were actually covered in the ninth, in the ninth grade physical science class when they looked in depthly at them. And that's what sparked them deciding that their next steps were, hey, we need to make sure that all of these are, you know, being covered. So, and I think with the new staff or new department coming into their own and really diving deep into that, giving them ownership of that and becoming accustomed, I think, is important.
Good, thank you.
So the last piece, I just wanted to share. A lot of times you hear like, oh, well, you know, two different, totally different groups of kids. And we talk about cohort data, being able to track those students as time goes on. And so I took a look at the class of 2024. So our current seniors that just took the SAT last year, their mean was a 929. When they took the PSAT 10 the previous school year, their mean was an 899. So that average was a 30-point increase from 10th to 11th grade in one school year. So for the 2022, 2023 school year, those 10th to 11th graders grew by 30 points. Then you say, oh, it's a great group of kids, you know, they've always performed really well. So I'm like, well, let's look at the class of 2025. So the class of 2025, which is our current 10th, our current 11th grade students, so these students will be taking the PSAT next week and the SAT in the spring. When they were in 9th grade, the mean was an 861. When they took the test in 10th grade, it was an 892. It was a 31-point increase. So we have two totally different unrelated groups of students in two totally different classes, and both groups grew their average by almost the same exact amount, which is a 30-point mean. So one would hope and anticipate that as that trend continues, that different things that we've implemented specifically in the building, it's not just one specific group of kids it's impacting. It is impacting all of our students. And so I just thought that this was kind of an important piece to share with everyone that we're not necessarily comparing apples and oranges in this situation when we look at the exact same group of kids. Two totally different groups grew by almost the exact same amount. So.
So we want to see what they do on SAT this year.
Exactly. And we could, well, and we could ultimately see, they'll take the PSAT and MSQT this next week. So we should be able to see how close to that 30-point increase that group is. And then, yeah, College Board will predict where they should be. So, and our kids have been continuing on through that band. So.
Any questions?
There's a lot. One question I have about those last couple of numbers. Does that take, do those numbers take into account? Like, for example, I know from my own 11th grader, from single 11th grader this year, last two years, his PSAT 9 and his PSAT 10 were out of, like their overall point totals were different amounts of points than the SAT is. So does that take into account that different amount of points that they're, they're out of, or is it?
So they should be out of the same number of points.
So like, I want to say one year, he was saying, oh, the math score I could have gotten was 1200. The next year, my math score I could have gotten was 13 or 14 or whatever. Like, it's a different number that they couldn't have gotten.
My understanding is that it is the same number, and I can look into this. My understanding is that it's the same number. What changes though with the year is where that band is. So that's probably, so for example, a student at a 9th grade level, let's say up to the 1200 mark, you could say. That's probably where it is. Because what happens is, is that they give you this band, and obviously it's all color-coded, and they can predict, because the score is the same, they can predict where that band moves. Should be, yes. And so I'm guessing that that's probably where it is. Yep, where that score is, is that. If you were, if a student was at a 1200 in 9th grade, they're anticipating you should be at a 1300 hypothetically in 10th grade, and that you would potentially score a 1400 in 11th grade. So. Yep, so it's a, it's a graduated, kind of gradient band.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Um, next, middle school.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'm going to talk about our middle school. We have, we do have a lot to celebrate, as Renee has already told us that we are definitely trending in the right direction. We also know we have, we have a lot of work to do. If you look at our scores right now, you can see we have lots of ups and downs. Our 4th and 5th grade in our ELA performed pretty well. They did show some growth. Our 6th and 7th grade in ELA, we have even more work to do with them. As Renee has pointed out, that is, that 6th grade especially, I'm sorry, the 7th graders this year is definitely that cohort that we're certainly keeping our eye on. And we have some things hopefully planned. I hope that the things that we have planned are going to really be able to address that moving forward so we can see a lot of differences next year. So we do have some things in place. Our 4th and 5th graders have Title I support, which is beginning now. Last year, it didn't begin until second semester-ish, and we are starting it right now, which is great because it's going to give them even more time to show some, the growth that they need to show. All of our classes right, in every class, we write across the curriculum. It was an initiative that was started long before I arrived in Richmond. What we're going to do this year is we're going to really start focusing on those really higher-level depth of knowledge questioning so that it evokes a more substantial response from our students so that they are understanding how, they're understanding what the question is that they actually have to answer as opposed to just reiterating something. So we can really do a lot of higher-level thinking, which I'm really excited about. This is something that I'm really passionate about. So I'm hoping to be able to go over this and, and help our staff start to develop the same type of questioning strategies. We are implementing research-based accelerated reader in all grade levels, which is really, really exciting. It was only originally supposed to be with 4th and 5th grade, and we figured out a way, thank you, Mrs. Staples, to have it for all of our grade levels, which is really, really exciting. Because when I went around and asked some of the staff if they would be interested in having accelerated reader, they all thought the exact same way, all of the Language Arts teachers thought the exact same way, that it would be a really great support for the sustained silent reading that we have every week in all of our classes. great support for the sustained silent reading that we have every week in all of our classes and that it'll help make the, the reading more meaningful to the students because it is a really great program that is self-directed and it is adaptive and everything is at their own level and they can achieve some really cool incentives that Renee has planned. It's going to be a lot of fun. We also have done our, we're doing, in the process of doing our ELA curriculum review to better meet the education of our students. We're going to go over all of those essential standards and priority standards. We're going to make sure that everybody is on the same page so that when we have our scope and sequences in place, that everybody knows exactly what they're going to be teaching and when. We are implementing a building-wide tutoring program. We are going to start with ELA and math. We are going to target our upper L right now specifically for the tutoring, but we are still going to have some things available for our lower L students as well. We are starting with the sixth and seventh graders, but we will have something in place for all of the other students that might need a little bit of support. We have teacher training and coaching support in ACRI, and that's going to really help support our MTSS programs within the classrooms. And then we have text analysis class for those students. The ACRI and the text analysis classes are akin to our Title I support in fourth and fifth grade. So we identify those students that are struggling and need that extra support so that they can then start to close those achievement gaps that we're seeing in their scores.
Ms. Morel.
Yes.
The building-wide tutoring.
Yes.
Can you just elaborate a little more on what that is?
Sure. So we are going to target right now, based on NWEA and Mstep data, individual students who we would identify what Amy talked about, those bubble students, those students that we know could have a really great chance of moving from that yellow area to the, to the green area so that we can get that, kind of close that achievement gap. So our, our plan right now is to have sixth and seventh grade ELA and then also math. We're going to run both simultaneously in like four to six week cycles so that we can really identify the standards that the students are falling short in and really help get them over that hump.
And then how, how is it? After school?
It's either going to be after school. Well, we have, we have a couple of different models that we're going to do. We have some teachers that are more comfortable working before school. So we can get a group of kids before school. There are some student teachers that would prefer after school, so we'll have some groups after school. And then for some of the students who don't fall into that specific category, we are going to ask the staff if they would be interested in perhaps using their lunch hour, on P Day to use their lunch hour to help support those students that might just need something today and didn't understand what today or yesterday's lesson was. So let me go and sit down with my teacher and hopefully they'll be able to do just a really quick mini lesson for maybe a small group of students to help move them over that hump.
Okay.
So the board knows each building, I allocated $10,000 to, which is about 400 hours of time. And those dollars came from not having to pay teachers to teach on their prep or to cover classes because we have more, we have two subs in every building basically to cover classes for sure. So it's just a reallocation of dollars. My hope is that at the end of the year, we start finalizing if we need to charge, if we can charge it to grants and stuff, we'll do that. But that's how the dollars came. So my challenge to the buildings, and as we get further onto the year, you're going to see, this is going to look very different in all three buildings. Because it's trying to target what's the needs the buildings are to address this data.
I just think it's a great idea to try to get those in that group to move to the next group. Or next color.
That's our hope. All right, I'm going to hope I do this right. So then we have our math, Mstep scores. We know that traditionally, at least in my experience, math tends to be a little bit lower than, than language arts. You know, I'm really hoping, beyond all hope, that the Mstep people take their cues from the College Board and really take a look at Mstep and reevaluate exactly the way that we're testing kids. Because it is, I don't, I don't know if any of you have ever had the opportunity to actually see what, I know the fifth grade Mstep, if you know what those four incredibly grueling tests look like for our poor kids. It is tough. It is very, very tough. And I think what College Board is doing is remarkable because they're, they're really figuring out a way to streamline the way that we assess kids, and I think that's really important. However.
Still with stuff.
It is, we are where we are and we are going to do what we can do to help our students get over, to, to help show that, to help close that achievement gap specifically in regard to Mstep. So we have, these are our scores for what they are. We do have some things to celebrate, like Renee said, we are still trending in the right direction, but we still have a lot of work to do. Again, we have our Title I support. This Envisions Math Series is adaptive, research-based math series that is going, I think we are going to be able to really see some, some growth across all of our grade levels. Truly, I think it's pretty, it's exciting to see. It's exciting to see teachers excited about it and it's exciting, exciting to see how well the kids are doing. And they're, they have, you know, they're so adaptable. They are just jumping right in and they don't even really realize the difference in their instruction, but if they're going to see, we're going to see a lot of different results, which is, I think is, is a pretty cool thing to see. The scope and sequences were changed to better meet the needs of our students. And again, teachers, teaching across all grade levels know exactly where they're teaching, what they're teaching, when they're teaching it. And school-wide tutoring implementation that I, implementation that I just referenced. And then this new math series is also going to help provide more scaffolding in our fourth and fifth grade, which is essential as kids move forward. We all know, just all of us, the way that we were taught, all of us in this room are all probably taught very differently in math, but we all know if you don't know your basic facts, it makes life very miserable when you have to start doing higher level math. And we know that. So hopefully, not even hopefully, we know that Envisions is going to help provide that scaffold that we know our fourth and fifth graders need, so. These are our science scores. I was actually very excited when I saw our science scores, when I saw the percentages at first, and this particular graph doesn't do it justice, but the one that Renee showed you did. And we are showing some pretty significant growth, which is pretty exciting to see. We are beginning year two in a new research-based science series. I see so much hands-on instruction happening and hands-on learning. We, as you all know, this was new to me, I didn't realize that this was a new thing that was last year, was moving from the domain-specific science model to an integrated science model. So we're getting everything every year. And it's seeing the hands-on investigations that are happening with this second year of the science series is really, really fun when we walk into classrooms and we see how much fun the kids are having while they're learning. Today I walked into fifth grade classes doing, no, I'm sorry, fourth grade classes. They were building, they were showing, demonstrating how to, how sedimentary rock forms in little plastic cups and it was really fun. And the kids could actually explain what they were doing, which is even more important than them having fun is that they can actually say what it, what it is that they're learning. We have our fifth graders that participate in Starbase every year, which is, I don't know if any of you ever got to go to Starbase. I was a teacher, when I taught fifth grade, we went to Starbase for several years. And if anybody, if you have the opportunity to go, you should go because it's a lot of fun and they learn so much while they're there. And all of it is part of our standards. Our fourth graders will participate, they did last year, they'll participate again in Little Inventors. Again, that use of higher level depth of knowledge questioning for when our students have to write across the curriculum. And then this is something that Renee is really excited about, I'm not sure how I feel about it, but launching dissection units in grade six through eight, I think is really, that we know, kids love it and we know it's going to be really, it's going to be something that they, that they have a lot of fun with. And then of course, we align our informational text analysis to our science instruction and content. We do that across all content areas. So lots of great things happening in science. We're really excited. In social studies, as a fifth grade teacher, before I became an administrator, this was always the toughest test, even when it was the meet, it was the toughest. And now as Mstep, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty grueling. However, we do have, we're on year three of a research-based curriculum that we're utilizing in our social studies classes, that implementation of those higher depth of knowledge questions. That's going to be our, I probably should have mentioned this, our professional development that we have on November 7th is going to focus a lot on our depth of knowledge questions and how to evoke those answers that we're looking for, the responses that we're looking for. We have our staff that's committed to disaggregating Mstep data to determine our areas of focus and then aligning our informational text analysis to social studies instruction content instead, again, writing across the curriculum. We had a school improvement district-wide meeting today and I was sitting, I'm on the social studies team and the amount of writing that goes on in all of our content areas is pretty impressive. That does not happen everywhere and it is a commitment, like I said, that the teachers had long before I got here and it is great to see because I think we are seeing the benefits of that. So our next is our eighth grade PSAT, which the evidence-based reading and writing, they rocked, I'm very excited about. Even though you saw a little bit of a dip, they still did fantastic and we're very, very proud of them, obviously. In all areas, we are really paying a lot of attention on our instructional minutes and meeting our instructional minutes. We know that if we don't have the rigor that, that is required of our students to succeed, that they're not going to succeed. And making sure that we keep an eye on those instructional minutes and that everybody's meeting them will really help with that. The College Board has offered, they, the kids are already participating in the digital practice. They all created their, their College Board accounts last, probably about two or three weeks ago. I know in Ms. Krampson's class, they were, she was helping them create those accounts so that they can get started on the digital practice. Disaggregating the Mstep and NWEA data to determine our greatest area of needs, we can cross-reference a lot of it and really hone in on those standards that we know are the most needed. School-wide tutoring program implementation, this Envisions Math Series, which is just fantastic and adaptive practice and online support. And then of course, our ELA curriculum review, which I am just as excited about as Renee is, which will review our priority standards to make sure that we are continuing to meet the needs of our students. And then we are going to show, I'm going to show you pretty much the same type of data that Andrea showed you, our NWEA. You're going to see that we did not, again, meet that targeted scores that they anticipated that the kids would meet. I, I think, you know, I think one of the things that we really need to think about, and this is a, this is a building conversation that I'm going to have with the staff, is we need to think about the timing of when we give our NWEA test the last, in the last part of the year. If you think about our, our fifth grade specifically, they have the most grueling testing schedule. They have four tests that they have to take and then we saddle them with the NWEA. And by that time, it's like, it's exactly what we were talking about. Do they really care about this test? And, and we need for them to care because this is how we drive our instruction. And so that's one of the things that the staff and I are going to talk about at the middle school is to make sure that we are offering the best opportunity for our students to succeed. And just, just reflecting and making sure that, that we are doing what, what we know is going to be best for them. I don't think we weren't doing what, I don't think, what, I don't believe that it wasn't, if we weren't doing what was best for kids. I just think we need to reflect and see if we can do something that might be a little bit different for next year when we take it at the end of this school year. Because you're going to see the same trend pretty much in all three areas. So a couple of grade levels did meet the requirements, but we want them all to meet the requirements, so. Again, our frequent walk-through schedule that we're going to have, which is also one of the greatest things that an administrator can do to help instruction remain, remain solid or improve. Cross-referencing that data with Mstep to make sure that the learning gaps are met is also imperative. We'll look at our fall scores that we are getting now and see how we can adjust moving forward to make sure that all of the needs are being met. So our points of pride, our Mstep and PSAT scores are trending upward. 50% of fourth graders and almost 50% of our fifth graders were proficient or advanced proficient on the ELA Mstep, which is exciting. Our eighth grade students scored higher than the state average of both math and English-based, I'm sorry, evidence-based right, reading and writing on the PSAT. And our fifth grader scored higher than the county and the state on the science Mstep. And then one more point of pride too, that we were talking about today, and actually, Mrs. Jarrett brought it up while we were at our school improvement meeting, is we are seeing a higher level of engagement across the board. And I know a lot of that has to do with our CAGEN strategies that we're using, their staff buy-in and their student buy-in and the kids, they're excited. They go into a classroom, they're expected to do cooperative learning, they're expected to use these CAGEN structures that they've been using and they know them and they're familiar. And then it gives the teacher the opportunity to do something different because they have that trust established already, which is, which is really important. So lots of points of pride, but we also know we have a lot of work to do.
Don't click again.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Ms. Morel?
No.
Before Mrs. Nadir comes up, I want to, I want you to think of it this way. Education is a people industry. It's about relationships you have with kids and getting them to trust you for them to take risks. We are not an industry like manufacturing where anybody can kind of come in, put them on a machine and they just learn the machine and just keep producing. That's not education. And so what we experienced last year with the number of staff transitions that we had, when I look at these scores, I am astounded by how much we did with those vacancies. Andrea, you said at one of our meetings, seven math teachers a student possibly could have had last year in the high school. And yet when you see the numbers that, that, again, nobody's saying we're done and we're happy where we're at. But when you look at those numbers, that is remarkable with what staff who are willing to put their heads together and work together can accomplish. I said at the beginning, this is, out of all my years of, in administration, this is the most excited I've ever been to start a school year. And looking at what we've already done in the buildings and the, and the collaboration, I'm, I'm very optimistic those scores are even going to be higher next year. So just remember that as we think it. I know it's not always, you know, we're comparing apples and oranges, two different groups of kids, but we are, but we also are looking at cohorts, so. And I know you guys know that. This is not, we're not a widget-producing industry. We're about creating individuals who can think and problem solve and do, and do that. I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Manguni, I think you're next.
All right. I'm Ms. Manguni, the elementary principal, and I'm here to talk about our data at the elementary. We have less because our high state testing is primarily in third grade, but it's really important to note that we start obviously in kindergarten to get those kids ready for third grade. So we'll talk a little bit about how it builds on one another. So super excited that this is our second year in a row being number one in Macomb County. So as you can see, there's 116 elementary schools in Macomb County. A lot of different demographics, a lot of different variables there, but it's for the second year in a row that we are number one at 65.2% proficiency in ELA. So as we were talking about cohorts, what I think is really neat about this is last year, I believe we were at 65.8%. So what we're realizing now is this really comes down to good instructional practices. So it's two different groups of kids, different variables, maybe at home, all sorts of things. And we're still able to have our kids at the same proficiency level regardless of what their variables are. So we're really proud of our teaching staff for that. So that is our ELA. And I think I just.
This went the wrong way. Okay, one more.
All right. Okay, there we go. This is just another way to look at the data, same data, ELA, Mstep, so we're at 65.2%, really far above the county and state by over 20%. So I think that's huge to notice. Very similar in math. So we're, what we're finding instructionally is we're giving great instruction in not just one subject area where our teachers feel a strength or weakness in one, in one or the other. They're really finding their flow in both, which is really important. So our kids are coming in just as, almost as proficient in math. So we are number one in the county, second year in a row in math as well. And again, coming in almost 20, yeah, 20% more than the state and county average. And again, this is the bar graph. V is blue, the county is orange, and the state is gray.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
I don't know if the board. I don't know if the board remembers, or if you want to go back and look at the old videotape, but I believe eight years ago, we were in the bottom quarter of the county. I think it was your first year that you started here.
Yes. It was not looking good.
We were at the bottom, and we have completely changed. And if you look at what has evolved in the elementary school over that time period, and I encourage you all to visit, I'm sure Ms. Nager and Mr. Gibson would, it's what the evolution of, again, it goes back to the staff collaborating, the staff committed to, this is our entire. If you're in the military, this is our mission, you know? And some people have that mindset that we all have a part in. So, again, I'm very optimistic on the middle school, high school, because we have a lot to be proud of and what we've done in the year. But again, eight years ago, I was telling you, I was worried about being on the state list.
Yeah, it's very exciting. It's definitely been a mind shift and a culture shift to put student learning first, and I think they're doing an awesome job with that. Now, we're going to shift a little bit to the NWA, which is more of the local assessment. So at the elementary level, we do math, reading, and language arts. Language arts is only for second and third grade. So it's blue for me here, but it doesn't, oh, there it is, blue over there, but not there. So if you want to maybe peek over here. If you just want to note that the orange is where NWA projects our growth to be and wants our growth to be for those grade levels. And then, the blue is where the observed growth is. So this really follows our trend data for MSEP. So there's no surprise that our NWA data looks this way. You can look at second grade also. It's really intrigues me that, you know, they send their kids into third grade very ready to be proficient, and they just continue on. So I think that's neat to see the building blocks there. So we are overperforming what our projected growth is. Same thing in reading. If you look at the orange diamonds, same thing, that's where we, NWA wants to see our students at benchmark proficiency, and then we are outperforming the growth. And this is language arts. Like I said, second and third grade is observed here, and again, they are outperforming what the typical projected growth is for those groups of students. And this graph is going to take a look at our building over the whole scope. So we want our kids to be in either blue or green, so blue is above grade level, green is right there at grade level, right at benchmark, yellow is right on the bubble, and then, as you can see, goes down by color. So our Title I services are students that fall in the red and maybe the peach color there, and they're doing a phenomenal job, so I intend for this to continue to grow like it has been. On average, though, as you see on the left-hand side, it says 56 percentile for second grade, 57 for first. NWA recognizes a student at benchmark at about 50%, so our students are falling, on average, at benchmark or above. So that's greatness. And now, we're going to look at math for the same thing. So our math is even higher. We're at the 84th, 77th, 69th, 68th percentile, which is above grade level for the majority. Some points of pride, as I already said, top proficiency in both ELA and math, Macomb County, two years in a row, and we continue to increase proficiency and advanced proficiency in NWA. So some of our next steps and our continued steps, because it's easy to, you know, celebrate this, but how will we stay there and then get even better? So this is where it gets exciting. So come November 7th, I believe it is, we have our first professional development day, and what we do on that day every year, at least the two years that I've been principal, is we create a professional, or I'm sorry, a personal learning plan for each student. So teachers break up into grade levels, and they take NWA data, and we do all hands-on dictation a day, meaning all kids go to where their needs are. So we have, we have kind of the yellow, red, and the blue groups, and so they pick a group of students, and then they come up with a plan on exactly what they're going to teach and target those skills. So that's one thing we'll continue to do. We have grade level interventions, and then we continue to have our instructional strategies, which are Haggerty, Bridges interventions, and then we are also piloting the new Envisions Math Program, so we hope that's going to bring great success also. One of the other things is teacher retention. I think it's huge that we've had very little teachers leave our building, although third grade is the grade level, we've had some retirements, and so, but I think that's really the work we want to continue to do, is to have people continuing to love to be in the building that they're at and staying with us, so as we feed them with knowledge and fill their tool out, that they continue to give that to the students and kind of keep their craft going. Also, CAGEN strategies, as you've heard in all the other buildings, that's a non-negotiable across the district. And I think that is about it for our next steps. Any questions?
I will say this, Mrs. Manguni, who's probably out of the team, has heard it the longest about the non-negotiables, that there are certain things that we will not waver as a district that have to be in the classroom. We know what best practices are. It's educational malpractice when we know it and we don't do it. And so, that has been something with the administrative team in the past, with Renee and going forward, that we have constantly talked about is, as a team, what are the non-negotiables for your building, and how do you get the buy-in of staff? You know, again, the three administrators that were here today, Heidi's been here the longest, she's been here almost ten, nine years in the elementary, so she has seen the transition and what can happen when you have that high standard. And I would just like to finish with this. If you take a step back as you're seated as a board member and look at this presentation tonight compared to previous, and you hear the excitement in the team's presentation, it should give you very optimism and hopefulness that we're on the right track. This is a solid team, and I don't mean team, it's just the administrative, the team that they have in their building, this is solid. And what the results that we're getting are only going to get better as long as we stay the course and maintain the high expectations for ourselves and for our students.
Yeah, it's been great to me. Everything's on the upward swing in all levels, so I agree with that. And I do just want to say that I had a little learning moment because last year, in our PD, well, I thought that I would just go ahead and create the non-negotiables because, of course, you know, I know what needs to be in the classroom, and then I had to take a step back and realize that if teachers aren't creating the non-negotiables, they're not owning them, they're not theirs. So this year, they created the non-negotiables, and we really met in the middle anyways. It was a lot of the same thing, but it's just so powerful that they had a voice. And so, what is their non-negotiable, they want to see it in their classroom every day, and it's not something that, you know, they're being fed. So I don't know, I'm continuing to learn and have them have ownership in what's going on in the classroom. So it's been a lot of fun, and we're having success so far. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank all of our administrations, everybody who worked on this presentation tonight. Thank you very much for your time involved and being here.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Renee, you're staying.
I know.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our business and operational. We have some updates on board policy. Mr. Wongesley.
Okay, it's been a while since we've done any policy updates. Trune recently released some updates in the board policy. When you look at them collectively, there's not a lot of major things that they're asking to change. So I'm going to go through each policy, just kind of generally point out the change. The one policy regarding the board officers of duty, I would just ask if we could do that at the end, because that may have more of a conversation, or may not, I don't know. But I'll start with policy 2303, violation of board ethics. When you look at it, it's on the back page. They also included that violating the Michigan law is also unethical behavior by a board member. So it's some simple things like that. They also included committee meetings slash subcommittee, because in some cases, it could be a committee meeting that's meeting. In this case, oh, no, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. 2306, board member compensation. And I'm going to go through these. If anybody has any questions, just say, "I got a question," or they're going to stop me. Compensation, still, the board does not receive compensation. This is something the board has elected to do many years ago, but the change in the policy is adding committees. In case there was a committee meeting, you don't receive compensation for that aspect of it. 2405, board officers. There's just, there's a change in terms of when the organizational meeting is, in terms of at the board's annual, it's just at the organizational meeting, because technically, if something were to happen, you could have an organizational meeting at any time, you know, if there was vacancies, you know, you can do a point and so forth, but that's the only change recommended there, that it's not at the board's annual, it's just at an organizational meeting. 2406 is the one I'm going to move to the end, which is the board officer duties. 2501, regarding meetings. This talks about adding language regarding emergency board meetings. It takes out, it just clarifies, there's some strength there of what was in the policy. The emergency meetings may be held without complying if it meets certain specific definitions of an emergency meeting, such as a severe injury threat to the health and safety and welfare of the public exists, and two-thirds of the board elected or appointed to the board determine that a delay would be detrimental. So hopefully, we will never have that, but it just defines that you can have an emergency meeting without following the open meetings act notice. In 250...
There's another one on that one.
Continuation, I'm sorry. At the end of that one, it talks about accommodations with disabilities for individuals. This is new part or new to the policy, that if any board member or other individuals with a disability requires reasonable accommodation, we must typically contact my office so that we can make reasonable accommodations to meet their needs. 2501A, electronic board meeting, electronic board education meeting. This was put in place several years ago, I want to say in '20 was the original, it could be all, but they've reworked a lot of this based on changes in the law and so forth. So basically, it removes medical conditions and state emergency disasters from this policy. It just defines two-way communication, and that remains the same. Permissible reasons for wholly electronic board meetings, if you look at the back page, it just says the board, that existing language stays. All the other stuff that was put in place primarily during COVID is removed. Permissible reasons for an individual to participate remotely, a lot of that was removed based on either the law changing or so, or just updating it to be in compliance with the law on Michigan Drive School Code. It talks about a board member who's not physically present in person due to a military or disability within the means of the ADA, Americans with Disability Act, or other reasons, may count towards a quorum and deliberate. So it just clarifies, removes a lot of the language that was required before and simplifies it into that. Procedures for accommodating electronic, you will see, just again, they contacted primarily the, you have to make sure that there is a two-way communication during the board. Number two on that section, that was left in blue for a reason, because as a board, we need to decide what our standard's going to be, that if a board member is going to remote, how much notice do they need to give? We have an obligation, if you notice in the blue, it's just a note, that won't appear in the policy, but if there's someone who's going to be virtually or remote, we have to notify in our posting that person, and you can see in number three, the, which is new language, how community members could contact prior to the board meeting, someone who's physically remote and so forth. So basically, what I'm looking for there is from guidance from the board, you want to do it as 48 hours, 36 hours prior to a board meeting?
So if someone, if someone, something happens, let's say, sick, but not sick enough that you can't remote a meeting, you can't do this because we have to notify the public that that person...
Correct.
And that kind of defeats the whole purpose of someone being able, or anything, you could be, you could be stuck at work at six o'clock, can't get back, but you can remote, stay at work and do remote instead of come to meetings.
And what this is saying is you can't do that anymore. You have to, in the notice, identify...
And that's legally, you can't do that anymore?
That is in the, that's the new language for the, in the law, I must read Rice Code 1215-263. So that was changed.
What is, wait, what's the law?
It's at the bottom of the legal authority.
The MCO.
A lot of this remote was put in place because of COVID. And so, now that there's no longer a pandemic, by the classification of a pandemic, a lot of this is being removed.
Yeah, well, you used to only be able to do that. Like, you used to be able to do it. Then they put all this language in on COVID, and then when they've taken it all out, they've also taken that out.
No, you were only able to do it if you were a military.
Uh-uh, uh-uh. Not during...
At one point, it was military, and then it evolved to doing remote, because we didn't have some board members who were away at a conference or out of state.
Right.
As long as we had, I think the biggest change this year is if there's going to be a board member who's remote, we have to notify in their notice at least 18 hours in advance to the community that this board member Teltow is going to be remote, and if you need to contact board member Teltow before the meeting, this is who, this is...
Well, isn't that kind of ridiculous?
And anybody can be remote out of here, is that?
No, hold on. But it's, isn't it ridiculous if board member Teltow's going to be remote, the public gets a chance to reach out to, has all of this in this, but if board member O'Donny's at the meeting, does the public still get the ability somewhere that says she could be contacted? That doesn't make sense. To me, it looks at, why even, why do you even have to have a remote if there's all these rules and regulations? The remote part of letting a board member be remote is sometimes board members had been out of town and were able to call in and be part of a meeting and still do their board business, they just weren't at the table. But this is putting all kinds of, do we have to do this?
This is, this is what Trune is being compliant, this is what they're recommending. Now, your blue can be, if I've got to have 18 hours to do a meeting notice, it could be 24 hours.
I know, but all I'm saying is it's dumb, because something can happen that at six o'clock, a board member, something happens, you can't physically get here, but you could remote in. This, this isn't enabling that to happen.
My child has 103 fever, I'm not leaving him home alone by himself.
Right, I got to stay home with him.
But I can sit and do the meeting.
But I can conduct the meeting.
But it has to be 18 hours.
Yeah, but before, we couldn't do it at all.
Correct.
And so, now, that's what I'm curious right now. Initially, we could, I'm talking about right now, the way that it stands, we can't do it. We can't do that anymore.
Can anybody, yeah, that's what I'm asking for clarification on. Currently, can any of us board members call in remote if I can't make it, say, can't make it to next Monday's meeting? Can I call in remote?
If you look at what the policy that was approved, the policy that last was approved on this, if you look at November 22nd, '21, that was the last time we amended this policy, permissible reasons were reduced down to military, which is struck out on medical conditions, statewide emergency, or local emergencies.
Right. So not for just any old thing.
Not because you're stuck in traffic.
Right. But this, this is...
But it's considered a medical condition if you're sick.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you're sick, but I mean, I'm saying like if you get stuck in traffic, or I guess if your kid's sick. I don't know. That sounds...
It doesn't say a kid, it says a board member.
I mean, I don't think that that's, it's great.
The only time I would think it's even important is really during our organizational meeting, let's say something for the vote, for the election. Well, it is, but I mean, that would be something.
Yeah, but if you do it ahead of time, like this, at least this way, we can put it in here, that if we do it ahead of time, we could do that. So like, if you were out on business for your day job, or on vacation or something, and you still wanted to be part of a particular meeting, you could, because you would have notice of that, obviously. The only time that it wouldn't work is for, like, I got stuck at work, or I got stuck in traffic, kind of. Because technically, it should work if you were sick as well, with the medical thing.
Read two, excuse me, letter C.
Be sick an hour before the meeting, but you can't, but you can't do it because this stupid thing says you got to give 18 hours notice. Just dumb.
Well, if you're, it says a medical thing, though, you can do it, right?
It says a board member who is not physically present at an in-person board It says a board member who is not physically present at an in-person board meeting due to military, a disability within the meetings of the ADA, or others reasons permitted by Michigan law may be counted towards the quorum deliberating vote. Qualified members absent to military due to the follow-up.
But you have to do the eighteen-hour notice so that the public could call you up?
Correct. I have to give a notice to the public that a board member will be virtual. So what I'm looking for from the board is, how much time does the board?
And who do we notify?
Notify.
What time do we have to give?
At least eighteen hours.
At least eighteen hours. But that's not going to give you that much time.
I need at least eighteen hours and fifteen minutes. Because I have to put, or I, or Cindy, once we'd have to put the posting together, put it out there and get it out there.
How about within twenty-four hours? Is that too long? I mean, we have to give our staff time to do what they need to do.
Well, yeah, I have no problem with even forty-eight hours now, because this is not going to be an emergency, because we just know, right? An emergency, you would know less than eighteen hours more precisely.
Correct.
So there's two things, the, at least is the twenty-four, forty-eight hours, and the blue one before is who do you want the board to notify? Because if you're notifying the board president, then I got to make sure the board president is letting me know so that we can get it out on the notice.
I mean, I have no problem with that.
It makes sense, it should be the board president, but, I don't know if that.
Or the secretary that knows the rule.
Hold on, finish. To me, it makes sense, because if you're not coming to a meeting, you're supposed to tell the board president.
Right.
You're going to be late, whatever. But it doesn't make sense if you got to do all this stupid notice stuff, the board president's not doing that notice, the superintendent's off of it.
But I would then contact Brian, because I, I think someone was alluding to it that I need to know it for attendance anyway, because I would then text Sandy Realco and say, okay, Danielle's not going to be here.
Yeah, I was saying, they just let me know, and I would just know when I did attendance, but either way, I don't care.
I don't have a problem if it came to the board president.
Yeah.
So put board president down.
Go to board, and at least, number of hours?
I have number. Twenty-four. I'm good with twenty-four.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that reasonable, you think, for you?
Yeah, is that reasonable? Do you think you can get it?
Yeah, we, we need this exceeded, so what this would be is, just running today, we have the posting, it was out Friday, well, yeah, Friday officially, it went out to the community, so I would need to know by Sunday night at seven o'clock, it's twenty-four hours, and then we have until six hours later, so one in the morning, no, Saturday, yeah, twenty-four hours, I'd have to know twenty-four, because I have to put it out eighteen hours, so one in the morning.
Monday morning.
Monday morning, because Monday, the posting has to get out, to be in compliance with the law.
So should we change it to forty-eight hours?
Yes, forty-eight hours. It's two days, two business days. I mean, I would like to put two business days, but that's not even.
So forty-eight, because our meetings are always on a Monday, so you have that weekend time?
Yes, and then you don't have to.
Then you have to be at one o'clock in the morning sending out the.
So what format would we be using?
You would just, you would just know, oh, that would be the logistics now, I'd have to, more likely, it could be Teams, it could be Zooms, I just got to make sure it's projected so that the people are interacting, you have the ability to, they can hear you, you can hear them, and there's a interaction.
An audio, not a visual, video, or both?
We could do.
We've done, we've done video.
You're allowed to just do audio, though, the way that's written, so.
Yeah, because here.
We've done it, I think Tracey Bertels, we did the phone, and we have done video for.
Your phone's doing.
Twenty, twenty-five oh six, organizational meeting, they did some language changes here, it says they've changed some things, the board meeting may conduct an additional organizational meeting during the calendar, that's if things change or you want, you want to change. But I think the biggest thing for us, and this is always going, I guess it's going forward, that it establishes that the second Monday of the month in January is the organizational meeting. The organizational meeting is not the regular meeting, because at the organizational meeting, you set the regular meeting dates. So this just, and that's, for the most part, that is what we've done, is practice. Minimally, that's what has to be done at the organizational meeting, the elected officers and schedule, we always do the other things, like the banking and stuff like that, but anyway, that's what's required, you could do other things.
Brian, what does it mean, the board may conduct additional organizational meetings during the calendar fiscal year? What does that mean? Is that something legal that has to go in there?
In the, in the policy, I think it's at the point, if there's a vacancy in officers, and I think it's one, it's not on here, the president has the ability to appoint someone. If the president's gone, and the, you know, and you're having, or not on the board anymore, and you've got the vice president stepping up, you may, as a collective group, say, okay, we need to do another reorganization to figure out roles. It just allows you, it doesn't mean it's there. That was one that they had recommended putting in as, anything, like I said, anything in the dark is what they added in their policies. Title nine, sexual harassment, again, taking out, in the previous policy, it talks about coordinators, decision-makers, appeal, we have all of those, basically, the title nine is designating it, it's some language cleanup on this one. The big change is under the definition of sexual assault, it includes the definition of what rape is, A, B, C, D, E, and F, different category, statutory rating, finally, et cetera, it includes that in the policy. Supportive measures, big change in here, reiterates that they have to be appropriate and non-disciplinary, non-punitive. Again, it was in some of that policy, it's a wordsmithing and changing. This is, part of this is getting in compliance with the last title nine changes, but we're going to be scheduled for another title nine, because they've been out for public comment, we're expecting more changes coming in title nine forward. Letter F, for some reason, was listed, and it should not have been a letter, it just says all supportive measures must be kept confidential to the extent possible, basically. Just going through here, this is a lengthy policy. Basically, B and C, wordsmithing, they combined them in together, including circumstances for resolution, including parties from resuming, basically, just wordsmithing it, putting it together. There's some minor. Implementing disciplinary or imposing discipline was a number eight previously, they moved it to be in its own, so it doesn't fall under the one through seven appropriate remedies, it's a separate, so basically, it's taking that, the district will impose disciplinary sanctions, consistent with the district policies applicable or any codes of handbook. This is regarding, I think this is the, so it's moving out basically from number eight, there's some other things, discipline may range, identifying that it may range from reprimand to termination, or student suspension or expulsion. Biggest change on this one, if you look at retaliation, it clarifies, all districts' employees must be trained on how to report, we do that. And again, if you look at what's been stricken out, strike through, it's a little, it's similar to what's there, they just wordsmithed and reorganized it. We do that, we bring the attorney in in August, and then all of our administrators, who could be the, either decision-maker, coordinator, appeals, they go through, it's like a five-hour training that they have to go through, we do that annually. Investigators must receive training in how to prepare reports, we do that with, if we have one, with the district's attorney, they train them on how to, to actually complete the report. Thirty-three oh three, gifts and donations. When we receive a donation, we fill out the form, thirty-three oh three F, it's just recognizing, anything over ten thousand dollars comes to the board to accept the donation, anything under ten thousand dollars, I accept on behalf of the district, and our policy is, we send them a letter of thank you, et cetera. Districts must be lawfully, they added, it has to be lawfully, and support the educational purposes. In talking with the attorneys on this, in some districts, gifts were accepted but had no educational purpose for the district of being accepted. That doesn't happen here, but it just defines, in order for gifts to be accepted, especially if I'm accepting on behalf of the district, it has to support our educational purpose. Soliciting donations, the district, it says you can solicit donations in accordance with law, which may be exempt from charitable organization, so it allows us to solicit donations and gifts. Individuals wishing to solicit donations on behalf of the district must receive written approval, so we just can't have anybody out there saying, hey, I've collected a donation on the district without the district knowing, which is clarifying that. Distribution of printed materials and advertising in schools, thirty-three oh eight. This is a clarification, I don't know, in their policies, it says one or the other is their recommendation from Truett. In our policy, that got approved, it was the board or superintendent. Typically, I approve the flyers that go home, it doesn't come to the board. Now, if you guys want that role, we would just change it to board, but I don't think you want to approve Friday folder flyers. You might. Bloodborne pathogens, where this becomes more prevalent is because now we brought our custodians back in-house, this is policy thirty-four oh five, they are more likely to come in contact and have occupational exposure, so not that teachers and administrators won't, but they have more of a higher risk, so we need to develop plan to, to update how we control their exposures and provide, so there's more of a training that we provide, yearly training, we provide our custodians, this could be asbestos, this could be bloodborne pathogens, and this particular policy is.
Does this mean that we don't already have a plan?
We, no, well, we currently, with our custodians, we do. This is now saying that if you have employees that are subject to those exposures, by policy, you have to have a plan annually and look at it annually. We've been doing this. Now, with the custodians brought back, it's more of a need to make sure it's in policy so that people after me do not let it go, they have to do it. Right now, it's very basic for those that, like, we do the bloodborne pathogens for staff to watch every year on Safe Schools. It's not the most exciting videos that we watch. This is more because now we're dealing more with, sort of, how you clean it up, dispose of it, et cetera, because they're the ones actually going to be doing it. Same thing with thirty-four oh seven, asbestos management. The difference here is in the structure, this falls under Preston and Jamie from the organization, they would be the designated to ensure that we're compliant, they're already doing that now, it's just a name, name change in the operations. So like, when we brought back our custodians, we had to talk about asbestos, we haven't really had that conversation to that level with any staff member for years, just they've been a third party. The third party had that conversation with custodians. Firearms, thirty-four oh eight, this policy brings in the conversation of antique firearms, which are oftentimes used in plays and other things, so it defines, based on Michigan school code, what an antique firearm is. You're going to see on the second page of that, there is some blue and yellow on your page, probably not blue and yellow, but number four, five, and six is in blue, number seven is in yellow. If we're adding antique firearms to our policy, this is one you do not have to. You don't want to add it, then number one would be taken out, and number seven would be taken out, they go together. Number four, five, and six is talking about firearms. This would be, if you look at permitted uses, a peace officer, number one, a peace officer is defined by parents, a student parent licensed to carry a concealed weapon may, again, that was already in our policy, keep it in the vehicle, but they can't bring it into school. Number three talks about permission, the superintendent possesses firearms, but other, no other weapons, with any lawful parameters established by the board, that was then in our policy. Four, five is really talking about if you have an employee or a contract person, such as our liaison officer, they are allowed to possess a weapon, weapon on them in school.
What if you have an employee that has a CPL?
As a what?
A CPL, like a.
Yeah, but that's the next one, a person's license to carry a concealed weapon.
But this is a five-year employee.
A person.
Correct, and that's why the four, five, and six, you do not have to add those to the policy. That is, it's a recommended, if you want to add it to the policy, but I, on my sheet it, on my, it's in blue, so it's a conversation with the board to have, you don't have to add four, five, and six.
So that means, number five means that anybody in the building who has a concealed carry.
Or any, because any person, it says.
Yeah.
Any person.
So could that be an eighteen-year-old?
Who can carry a gun in the building.
Can you be eighteen to get one?
Yes.
Anybody know?
Well, no, twenty-one for a CPL.
Okay, so then we're not talking any kids, so we're talking any adults in the building.
Well, I mean, you can have other guns, you can have other guns.
Parking in the parking lot.
Or school premises, school events.
Football game.
That's what I mean.
Football game.
Volleyball game.
Yep.
The existing policy, if you, if you look at one, two, and three, number three, a person with permission from the superintendent or designated could possess a firearm within the lawful parameters, so if we have someone with a CPL and they have permission, they could bring, I'm not, had anybody asked me, or, so nobody's approached it, but they would have to, four, five, and six kind of opens the door a little more.
Yeah, four, five, and six lets them just carry if they want to.
I, I am not a proponent of this, but.
I don't like that at all.
As a board, this is something that I.
Well, do we need four because of our liaison officer?
That was next question.
No, you could do a person with permission from the superintendent.
Because, right, that fits in that part.
Do they currently do that?
They, they have.
Do they carry their weapons currently, or do you know?
Yeah, I mean, Friday night's football game, they all had weapons.
Yeah, I guess they did.
And, and permission, where it says superintendent designated, if we're calling for pleas to be there just to have, that's in essence generating the permission.
I think so, too, I would agree.
So, but yes, I mean, if you ever wanted to not do the liaison officer and hire your own.
Contracted.
Contracted, then you'd have to have, in that, that person would be given permission to have a gun if you wanted that. I didn't feel I had the ability to just, you'd allow me to take that out, that's why I'm bringing it to the board for four, five, and six, it is not my recommendation to put four, five, and six in the policy.
And I'm, the antique gun, what?
Often times, and I can't say I had it in this district, but often times you'll bring antique guns into like a social studies class.
I've seen them for our plays.
Displays, they're in plays.
We locked them up every night in my office during the.
Again, if you don't want antique guns, then number one, if you don't want antique, number one and seven would all come out, and four, if you don't want guns, four through six, so basically, the existing policy would stay. This would be the, one of the policies that I need clarification and direction on.
That's how I'd like to see it. Do we want to put the.
Existing policy, or?
And just leave everything else out?
Existing policy.
So no one, no seven, and no four, five, and six.
So if we have a play that is a fake.
We would have to do a fake, non-useable gun.
Really cool.
Okay.
Okay.
So by appearing, no four, five, six, or seven?
I'm okay with all of it the way that it is, just.
Existing policy.
The original policy.
No, I'm okay with the changes.
You want all the changes. Okay, I, I would rather not add any of that. I'd like to leave the policy as it was.
So do we, is there consensus is what you need, S, so that we, so that, because he's coming back in two weeks and this stuff is going to be.
I understand that, so Danielle, what's your?
I'm more comfortable with the way it was, just two and three, sort of the original version, not the highlighted stuff.
As the policy stands?
Yeah.
Sandy?
I'm?
Hold on. Okay.
I just didn't like. I'm trying to.
I'm trying to see, I don't, see, I don't think I have the page with one and two on it.
It's on the other side of the-
It's on the other side of it.
Flip it over.
Five is just way too much for, I'm more comfortable if you don't have five in it.
Oh, I know.
That just-
I am definitely more comfortable of the way it was.
The original policy.
Four, five.
Angela?
The original policy.
I'm with the original, what we heard from Kelly. Candace?
The original, I have this, this just seems like if we do this, then we have to put safeguards in other areas, to me.
Okay, so we're sticking to the original policy.
There'll be more talk, but-
Policy forty-one oh one, nondiscrimination, the biggest change here adds the bullet, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, which is a requirement, the policy didn't have that, and also adds the Michigan Whistleblowers Protection Act to the list of things we cannot discriminate against, basically. I'm going to look through the policy, oh, that one, we see that one. Anti-harassment, forty-one oh two, except in regards to Title I sexual harassment, it's defining, in anti-harassment, these are the definitions, again, except for Title IX sexual harassment. And then, letter C talks about unlawful retaliation that was not in our policy previously, that you can't retaliate against someone making a complaint, a witness. Anybody who's gone through any type of harassment investigation, so for the attorney always, or the employee who's running it, always says, just so you know, you cannot retaliate against other people. So just putting it in the policy that I wasn't there. Whistleblower protection, which is policy forty-one oh three. You can't go after someone because the employee was, was going to or made a report, basically just, it does take out the word reasonable, reasonable is oftentimes subjective, so it's just a violation of, a violation or suspected violation of federal law, it's either did you or didn't. Forty-three oh three, it's in there twice. Forty-three, or forty-one oh four, employment complaint procedure, it defines, now Jamie's officially HR, defines him as our point person with all employees, that if there's a complaint, it goes to him. Tammy has always been the backup, there's the number, phone updated number changes in there. In this policy for complaint, sorry, forty-one oh five, workplace accommodations, again, puts the Pregnancy, Pregnant Workforce Act, PWFA, again, you can't, got to make accommodations, basically, is what it says as you look at it. It includes that now in it. Forty-two sixteen, this talks about personal communication devices. There is no recording of communication or images of students or parents of public, by employees, if you look at it, but unless there's an educational purpose, and I'm going to be honest, I can't give an example of why we would do this, because any type of recording we do, and I'm thinking of an IEP, if we're doing observation, that's part of the approval process in the IEP, that they're allowing people to go in and do observations, so. When I talked to the attorney, and I did not talk to our main ones at the time, the gentleman I talked to couldn't give me a solid answer of why that's, why it's in there.
So this would then permit technically to record lessons, like lectures in class, technically?
This is talking about employee-owned cell phones, computers, tablets and any other device that employees enable, so we're talking about employees' recording.
Not districts.
And so, again, prior is unauthorized recording of images, serious prohibited, that was the policy. If you didn't have permission, you can't record it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a stretch might be, there's an emergency situation, I have two kids in a fight, I'm not, I'm trying to capture the, the-
Reason.
The reason, again, I don't know, because I can't get a clear answer from the, I did not get a clear answer from the attorney on this one, so.
So we don't know if this is like, this is like putting in here just because this is their recommendation or is this something in reference to law?
This is their recommendation to clarify, so evidently, there has to be a reason why this is in the policy and it didn't, they allowed an employee to record because there was an education. Again, I can't think of anything off the top of my head. I can, I will follow up with the attorney and the information.
Yeah, I don't love this.
Let me, let me give an example, is this what we're thinking? I know that our PE teachers were reporting the kids as they weight lift, and then they would show it to them afterward so that they could see what they were doing right or wrong, or what they needed to change. Is that under there?
Like, this is, that's what we would-
I guess, I would say it could be. I would look at it as if that's part of the course, it probably should have been in the syllabus notifying parent that that's what they would do.
Could be happened.
Now, if they didn't do it, and the parents didn't know, then that would fall under an education, I'm recording for this purpose.
That's what I was thinking.
The concern I have is that stuff being kept on employees' devices.
Well, just like, I'm sure like the football team watches, you know, video, right? I'm sure.
Yeah, we have film.
Yeah.
What about like a teacher that takes pictures of her classroom on her personal phone to post on Facebook?
Right, that's what I'm saying, but wouldn't that be on district's property?
But is this that, I didn't hear what she said.
Shh, shh.
Like, say a teacher takes a picture of her class or students in her classroom on her personal phone to post on our Facebook.
That's an authorized record, because we have from permission for parents that we can do this unless they opt out.
Unless they check those.
And so there's about a half a dozen.
But I think the assumption is that the district has it, not that teachers, and then that teacher now leaves and still would have-
It's still on their phone.
Correct, correct, you're right. And with technology, there's a lot of those possibly out there, whether it's this, whether it's an iPhone or iPad that a parent is using to videotape a band performance, and it's their personal and sharing it, it's out there. So I guess, as I'm talking through with you, this group, those would be all the educational purpose that would allow that to happen.
But wouldn't those situations be on district property? Like, if we're doing it for educational purposes, like, like game show or whatever, like it's, like, it was recorded, I would assume on district property, and therefore that doesn't, that's not what this says, that, that's already okay. This is saying that pretty much your personal use, personal self-usage. If there's not a legal reason for this to be in here, I, I don't like it. That's my personal opinion.
Can we get, can we get maybe a little more clarification and see what?
I mean, this is saying that basically any parent could record my kid, whatever, doing whatever, and put it on their Facebook if they wanted to.
No, they have to have an educational purpose for that recording on their personal device.
Yeah, but that could be anything. I mean, you could, that's a very blanket statement, in my opinion.
Well, but this is specific to employee conduct, employee conduct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if I'm, if I'm using my personal device to take pictures, which I believe many employees have done, it would, the provisions are there, but I'm using a personal device.
The parents, so like, if I'm a parent helping out, which does happen quite frequently.
Sure.
I'm a parent helping out inside of one of the classrooms, and then there'll be another parent helping out, taking pictures of me and my children and posting it on their Facebook. How do we deal with that stuff?
That's separate than this policy. This is talking about our employees.
But our employees are allowing that to happen during that class holiday. So now here, I may even have the, I've signed my letter saying, do not put my kid on Facebook, but now so-and-so, so-and-so is taking pictures of the classroom party.
On their field trip or something.
And now my kid's on Facebook even though I signed that, and on some personal Facebook that I don't even know where is anymore, not even on.
I would agree that is-
But kind of, kind of isn't that, I almost hate to say this, I mean, unfortunately, that's the way the world is. That's what people are doing.
Correct, since we, as a district adopted Facebook as we have, yes, that's how it has been.
But somebody could take a picture in Meyer.
Yeah, but I'm talking about public school that I send my kids to, I'm not talking about Meyer that is open to the public, anybody can walk into Meyer. The only people that should be in school are employees.
Taking pictures.
Taking pictures, right, not a non-employee, you know, even students aren't allowed to take pictures of other students.
I think that's an interesting point.
Well, because what if they're on a field trip, and you have parents who are sharing filming, and they take pictures, and then they put it up, here's our kids went to-
But I think she's saying, take a picture of your own kid, don't take a picture of mine.
Well, in a field trip, yet again, now we're out in a public domain at a field trip, of course my kid could get their picture taken there. But if I am a parent in the classroom, who my kid is in the classroom, it, I feel, it shouldn't, my child's picture should not be taken and shared by another parent.
On their private-
On their private Facebook.
I will, I will agree with you, that, that shouldn't happen. I-
But how do you make it not get it?
That, that would be a challenge.
You put it in your policy.
You put it in your policy where? Or like, just maybe, like, maybe make teachers more aware that this does happen quite frequently, that there are, you know, when you have like-
Because their parents that like come in to help.
Or you don't need ten volunteers, you might only need two volunteers, and keep them busy, rather than chatting and taking pictures. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I just think there needs to be kind of some volunteers, yeah.
Be aware, yeah, well, there, there needs to be an awareness that your world is your world.
I think, I'm hearing two issues. One, I'm going to get clarification, one, the attorney will get that, but the second is what you're bringing up, I need to-
But I don't think that's-
Kind of look into it.
That doesn't fall in this.
Because it doesn't fall into this, I think it's interesting.
But let's investigate, see if there is any policy, and if not, should we add it?
Okay. Policy forty-two twenty, use of, use and disposal of district property. The policy currently allows, with permission, that district policy, people could use resources in the district. It just adds intentionally, because there was a case where I got questioned on, someone wasn't being held accountable to damaging district policy, they were intentionally damaging it, and the way the policy was written, there was a loophole, so this just closes a loophole.
District property, you mean?
District, district property, I'm sorry, district property. So if they intentionally damage it, it just, employee's responsible for it. Again, I have not had any district employee intentionally damaged anything and so forth. Policy forty-two twenty-seven, false claims Medicare claim. You'll note in the top, that little note part will not be in the policy, but it just says a note, this is required policy for any school that receives over five million dollars in statement, we do not receive five million dollars in state Medicaid, and there are certain restrictions on what we can bill for Medicaid based on the situation of student. With that, you don't have to adopt this policy, this would be a new one. However, I think it's a good policy to have, because it talks about if you fraudulently submit claims, there is punishments for it. Again, all of this is new, so I would ask to make sure that if you look at it, talks about the penalty, et cetera.
But what's the-
Go, go.
Okay, if it's new, what's the point of having it if we don't ever have claims in that amount? So what, what would be the point of just-
So we have employees that do submit Medicare claims.
Yeah, right.
So what this policy is saying is putting those that are in that role on basically notice that if you fraudulently submit claims, there is a punishment, it's against board policy, you cannot fraudulently submit claim. From a threshold perspective, it's required in districts to have this policy with that dollar value. We don't meet that dollar value, so we don't technically have to have this policy. But I think it's a good policy to say, if you are doing Medicare claims, they need to be up and up and on the run, you can't fraudulently-
So there isn't anything anywhere already that tells the employee that about false Medicaid claims?
It would be, and probably unprofessional conduct and stuff like that, that we would probably use as our reason.
I mean, as you're, as you're, in the process, there aren't, yeah, there are.
On the Medicaid form?
When it, when it tells you what, how you're doing it.
Oh, when you're submitting it, yes, yes, there, there is that aspect. But if I had an employee who, we found out intentionally violated, this would be the policy I referenced, that they violated board policy twenty-two, which would give reason for-
They broke the law here, but they violated our board policy here. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, because you could, they broke the law there, which could be criminal, this may not be a criminal that we're dealing in discipline here, it might be a-
You could lose your job.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the difference. If they violate, if they intentionally violate, they're going to be dealing with the law enforcement and that, that's automatically given. Again, and I have no, just want to make sure I'm on the record, none of our employees do we ever suspect have violated, so it's just more of a safeguard for the district that it's out there. Policy forty-two twenty-eight, no expectation of privacy. I'll be honest, I was surprised that this wasn't in when I was reviewing them, but basically, any employee who uses district property and equipment, it's establishing, the district has a right to look at that equipment, that is the district's equipment. So there is no expectation of privacy, that if you're using a district computer for personal, there's no expectation of privacy that the district-
Has to meet.
Has to meet, no. I will tell you, what we do is, we have reason to believe something happened. We don't go around and just check computers for the sake of-
Just because we have nothing else to do.
But I, there was none of this ever in any of our other policy, which I was a little surprised. We have it for student handbooks at lockers, there's no expectation of privacy on lockers, we can search things, we have the ability to search cars on our campus outside of police, but we didn't have it for employees, which I thought was unique. Performance-based compensation for teachers, this includes Michigan School Code three-eight-zero-one-two-four-nine. If you read the policy, this is the existing policy, it says all collective bargaining groups must include a method of compensation that applies to this policy. This is a little unique, because when we did the last contract, this was not, there was no willingness on both sides to include this in the policy. So technically, our contracts do not have a method that is negotiated in the contract. This board took action several years ago, and you have a formula that we use based on rating, we have a certain dollar amount we put in a pot, you get a highly effective based on the formula, and it's online, it calculates, but it's not in the, for teachers, it's not in their collective bargaining agreement regarding performance-based pay. So this is an FYI, but this is just including revised School Code three-eight, three-zero-one-two-four-nine, which is requiring performance base. The forty-five oh four is basically performance-based for other employees. It says you may, it doesn't require it, you know, when anytime the board gives additional dollars, I have to sit down with each group and negotiate, but this also includes individual contracts for employees that have individual employment counter, like our bus drivers, like our, basically our lunch aids, et cetera. Doesn't require it, but it does. Unlawful discriminating-
Can I go back? I'm sorry.
Policy, this last one?
No. Four-two-two-eight, the district employment, the, just with the searching of the laptops and that, I guess I, just the wording, inspections may be conducted at any time at the district, at the district's discretion. I'm not sure that I agree with that wording, I mean, there would need to be some sort of reasoning, right? I mean, you said there would have to be.
No, no, there doesn't need to be.
But, but if I know employee A is, I'm suspicious of, let's say they're drinking, and the rumor has, there's, there's a bottle in their bottom desk drawer. Because that desk belongs to the district, we can look at that desk, okay?
So if you're suspecting something, that's what I'm saying, I understand, you, you should have the right to do it at any time, but under the idea that you're suspecting something, I guess, is-
But that's what comes under the discretion.
Yeah.
But I don't, again, I, the reality I think is, it's school district property.
Well, I agree with it, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with the policy at all, just the wording on that may just be a little-
Which sentence is, is it inspections may be conducted at any time?
At any time. I mean, you know.
And, and the reason why that's in there is because you could have a situation, and again, I'm thinking worst case. Something's in that desk that you need to get before the employee's aware that you got it. Because it's something illegal or it's something inappropriate that's in there. And so it could be done after hours. The bottom line is, is as with our devices that we have shared, and I think it was about six years ago, maybe six years ago, we had Jennifer Miller from the M E A come in and talk to, uh, employees at one of our opening day. Been a little longer than now I think about it.
Yeah.
Talking about your personal, you can't be checking your stocks on district computers. You're technically not supposed to be checking your personal emails on district computers, all this stuff. Does it happen? Yes, but there's no way I, I can, or any of our, our, can mind that. But the reality is, is if you are using district computers to do that, what this is saying, please realize that it's not private. It could be access. So if you're downloading things to the computer, if you're doing something, the district has a right to look at that. So it, it's, it's a broad policy to basically say, anything district own, just telling the employees you should not expect it to private. You should keep it in your personal belongings or don't bring it to school.
Can we ask the district to search their personal belongings as well? Say they had something in their bag, like you, or something you put, that's, we have.
We could ask them. We could ask them, hey, but, but they don't have any, um, that's their personal property.
That's the last sentence of that policy.
In search of employee personal.
Computer.
Or.
Locker.
Yeah, so if, if, you know, if, if teacher A has, it's a personal person, I believe that there's a fifth of vodka in there. And, you know, she smelled, I can't search that per. What I would do is I would contact the police and it becomes now a legal aspect. And they would have to go through and get all their searches that they would require. That's what, you're right. All right, Kelly, that's what that last thing is. I don't have the ability, or the district, not me. The principals are able, does not have the ability to search personal stuff.
Thank you. I think we're on fifty-two oh two.
Fifty-two oh two, unlawful discrimination. This reworks that first paragraph about unlawful discrimination. I'm just trying to figure out. Look at what's here that I. In their eyes, it's just minor technical. That complaints against Title IX that underline, that was already adopted in the policy. But when I, when I saved this to the file, I did not take the strike through off the editing changes. So it printed with the lineup. That was already done by the board. Uh, there's some phone number changes to update them. Again, um, how to report, Jamie's our primary person. Tammy's the backup, especially if you're dealing with different genders. Later on, you'll see that the policy still had Christie Lashbrook two directors ago. So, uh, we updated to Amy's contact information. An alleged victim of unlawful discrimination president may, may present new evidence at any time. So basically, you're going through the process. They've turned over the evidence. We've done an investigation. If they have new evidence, you have to take that new evidence as, as it becomes available, basically. Appeals process, uh, it talks about, um, it gives more timelines and dates of, um, when, when appeals have to be submitted after they've been given their findings. Again, it's more tactical and in words from terms, just more tactical updates to make sure we're in compliance. Fifty-four oh seven, um, I think this, these recommendations from TRU came out of what we have been seeing pretty much nationwide in terms of looking at instructional materials. Policy letter, or letter B, really the rest of this policy was not in our current TRU policy. So basically what this is, if there's a complaint about instructional, something they object to, there's a process. Level one is first to start with the teacher. Level two is the appeal to the principal, where it identifies what is the objection. Uh, if they don't agree with the principal's finding, there is a letter, a committee review. This one, there were two options. My recommendation is a committee. The other option was the third level was the superintendent. The superintendent's decision was final. I would, and if you guys want that, I will put it in there. And number three just goes to the superintendent. I don't feel that's appropriate because I am not knowledgeable in many of the content areas that might have objectional. So I'd want a committee of, um, people with that background. This could be, you'll see there's complaints about library materials here, section C. But, um, really, letter B is more the instructional materials. So if we're talking, I'll just use social studies because there may be a concept in there. I want social studies teachers in on that committee. I'd want Renee to be part of that group. Again, I'm not a high school social studies teacher, so I don't have first-hand knowledge about it. So again, if you don't want the committee review, letter three is the recommendation is superintendent. And the superintendent's decision is final, it was their recommendation.
I like the committee. Is there a standard number of people that would be on the committee? Or would it just vary depending on the subject matter?
If, if you approve this, that is my expect, my direction then, that I have to put administrative guidelines and establish what's that makeup of that committee is.
Okay, I understand.
Uh, in the past, when we've had objections, or even, even when we've done even Title IX investigation, we get people from other buildings who have more of an objective and may not have a connection to the parent or student objecting. This may be a little more challenging if it's talking about instructional materials where I'm going to need other content people. But it could be, so I, that would be something I'd have to, I'd have to work on because since this is new, I'd have to put the administrative guideline in place.
I'd like to see it stay in as committee. I think that's important.
Fifty-four one one, student promotion, retention and placement. Basically, all the read by grade three is stricken. Um, because the law changed, so they just ask you to put reserved in that E slot. Don't get rid of E. But it could be for something for the future.
Oh, gee, gosh. I'm going to bring it back. Two years down the road.
Fifty-four nineteen, reading assessments, instruction, intervention and retention. Basically, when you look at what's been taken out, deals with the read by grade three law. Basically, what's left in the policy, um, is, um, that first part. Actually, they're combining everything, just saying we will have, provide instruction, intervention, informal literacy with specific interest, interest on K three, which we do. And follow the procedures and protocols required by state law, which with Title I and all that, we do already. But basically, everything else is stricken. It's from the read by grade three law. Fifty-five ten, student initiated non-curricular club. Basically, the only change is to include, and I did not know this was an act, but it is, the Boy Scouts of America Equal Access Act.
That's for the Girl Scouts, eh?
So I think the Boy Scouts, uh, my, my surface knowledge of that act is also allow, you know, they, they allow boys and girls in that organization now.
Oh, that's right.
And so that's the only change. The wellness policy, fifty-seven oh seven. The major change goes under the school meal program. Basically, with the state now, um, giving all students, um, where we start, we are, the district are responsible for the bad debt. I believe our bad debt, twenty-three thousand dollars.
Twenty-three hundred dollars?
Twenty-three hundred dollars. So we had to pay that out of general fund, basically, to, to service to pay that off in order to get free meals for, um, and they just also talk to this, that it's eliminating lunch shaming, that they don't. It prevents us if we ever are charging, you can't make wristbands or hand stamps to say, okay, these are the free kids. These are the reduced kids. You can't do that. We don't do that, but it requires you to have in your policy, um, again.
They have this now though, even though the state's currently paying?
It's not in law yet. It's for this year. Next year, it may not. So once they codify that into the revised, which I think, I think I spoke about it the last board meeting, that they're trying to get it into the school code.
Right.
Then my guess is this.
This will be taken out.
And the last one is then the first policy that we moved ahead, which was the, um, members. So I'm done. If anybody has any questions on the policies. I have a follow-up on the, the personal communication or the, um, yeah, the personal communication about the, the educational purposes. And I have directions with the firearms, so.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have been talking as a board to look at our duties of our officers here. So, um, everybody should have a copy of that. I sent a copy out sooner. I don't know if you just want to take a look at them or go by, like, the president. Is there anything that we wish to add or remove? I'm assuming you looked at this before.
I guess I wanted kind of like an overview for all of them and kind of guess, want to know what some other board members may think. But, um, maybe putting some kind of term limits based on the offices. Like maybe a president should only be a president for two years, two to three years, and then have to take a year off before they can become president again or for any of the offices. Just to make sure that everybody's kind of mixing it up and trying each of the offices. And maybe each person has the opportunity to kind of lead the board or be able to discuss or have more of a one-on-one for superintendent in that sense, I guess.
I think that's a good idea.
Thank you. I, I subscribe.
What if no one wants the job? I'm just saying that.
There was two things I was going to add to that. One, you need to have the first disclaimer that if nobody steps up, that those that pre, you need to have some disclaimer so you don't, aren't boxed in a corner.
That's nice.
And number two, um, is should you have three board members for whatever personal reasons resign and leave? And now you need to do a reorganization. You're looking at kind of the remaining board members, so they may have to be present against you. You need to have some, if you're going to go down that road, some disclaimer. I would, I would argue, and again, this isn't me, this is you guys, but, um, you have that ability to put in place now with the current policy. It's just based on how you vote.
Correct.
So if, as a collective board, you, you don't want, I'll pick on you, Deb, sorry. You don't want Deb to have, this is your second, third, third year? You don't, then okay, you could say.
Just don't hope for me.
Okay, it's, it's an option out there, but if you want to put it in writing, or just say if you have some backup that you do.
Is that there could come a time where one person ends up monopolizing the board because it often does, it may be a struggle to fill the seats. So now I have one strong board member, and then the seats are just being filled by people that are just kind of doing a favor to the district because there is nobody else stepping up. I feel like it would force somebody's hand to step up and be that leader so that it isn't just one voice for too long. You know, it needs, there's seven of us for a reason. And even if it does force somebody, if our language forces somebody else to be president for a year, that might be good for the district. Because it would be a different perspective, fresh set of eyes. You know, maybe just shake things up a little bit rather than, you know, I guess.
The climate.
The climate, yes.
I'm going to, I'm going to disagree. Because if you put someone in a spot that they do not want or are kind of eh about it, then how do you know they're going to do the best job?
Yeah, but I could be stuck in the situation of that person that's done it for seven years, is doing a horrible job. And I don't care about that next person. They can do an okay job this year.
And you make sure you voice it among your, your group or the seven of us.
You don't have to accept it just because you're nominated, right?
Correct.
I mean, you could say no.
Right.
Yeah.
So yeah, you know, you don't have to stay for the three years. It's just you couldn't do more than three years without taking a year off.
I'm just saying.
So if you, if you're, in your vision here.
Yes.
Um, with term, I guess, limits per se, would we then still be voting every year on?
Correct.
Okay.
So you could still only be in for one year.
Right.
Because what if your board doesn't want you there?
Or you don't want to be there.
Or you don't want to be there anymore.
Correct.
So that's, I, that was just an idea I had. And then also an idea, I mean, I know we all talked about it. It doesn't say in here that everybody needs to take Board one-on-one. Is that going to be a part, does anybody feel anything about board education and professional development for us as board members?
So you think we need to.
Add it?
Put in our board policy that at a minimum, we have to take one-on-one. Even though we've agreed as a board that that's what we need to do. So you think it should be put into policy because it's.
Correct, because not everybody's doing it still.
I think we should, because I did not, I, I only knew verbally that I had to take one-on-one. And if the board changes and people, you know, go or come or whatever, at least that piece is written somewhere.
It forgets to get communicated.
Yeah, it might forget, and, and it just depends on who's on the board and who changes and who comes and goes. At least we know that we have it in writing.
And I would like language that actually requires more of us as a board in professional development. I mean, required of our teachers, required of our administrators. I think we as a board should be required, especially if we're going to hold an office such as president or vice president. Maybe there should even be some kind of emphasis placed on what kind of education you have to hold an office to the board.
What if we created like an actual subtitle, force one of the board members to always be in the know in terms of when the next big meeting is coming, like the Lansing? Somebody who's kind of in charge of all the educational things that are around us that they can share with the board. That the, you know.
And I only hear them when they come out to me and you guys get them all.
Be responsible for sharing that knowledge.
But we all get that. We all get that information though, too.
Because we're all on the board, we're listed, and we get them through our, what is it, Michigan Association of School Boards? So you are ready, you're getting them.
A one-hour class to me isn't enough. I'm sorry. Board one-on-one isn't enough to be on this board. I think highly, more highly of what we do than a class of just one-on-one.
We never said one-on-one. We, we, we have said for, on this board, for the last eight or nine years at least, that at a minimum, you need to take one-on-one. Because the reality is you come on this board, you don't know what you don't know. It's just real. So that, I guess, I guess I'm just confused on that part. I understand, but I mean, we've all taken one-on-one, correct? Everyone at the table?
No, I haven't. I just registered for my.
Okay. So then I guess I'm looking at if that's the commitment that we made. I, I don't know why you need it in policy, but if the majority thinks they do, then put it in policy. But if, if that's what we decide at a minimum we're going to do, to me, that's as a group.
But who decided that? That's probably my piece.
We decided as a board eight or nine years ago, and it just carried forward every year.
So is that something that might mean?
But we changes.
I disagree. You have different people on here.
Yeah, but we do, we, I mean, just, just the few times I've been at an organizational meeting, that's always been said, like, read said.
At our organizational meeting?
Yes.
But if it's something we all continue on, why wouldn't it be put in language in case 10 years from now, none of us are here?
Yeah, that, right. That's the point.
It would still maybe be there.
I think it should be in policy too, because it's not, so.
I don't have a problem, but we have a, we have an orientation booklet. You go through orientation and in your orientation, it is said to you that at a minimum, this is what we're doing as a board. So if we want to put it in policy that says at a minimum, a board member must take, then if that's what.
I also would be okay with like having to have like so many continuous education hours, I guess. Like you, I don't know what else to call it, I guess.
Yeah. What if we, what if we can, I think you were going to be the president or the vice president or the treasurer or the secretary, where you had to have the two, at least two of the CBA classes that touch on your position specifically.
But there are some that aren't CBA. Like for example, there's a workshop right now that's this Thursday. That's M A S has been, it's, all it's about is organizational, the organizational meeting. You don't earn any.
I'm probably have to be.
So to me, that should be.
Instructional credits.
I know, but it's not going to be a, you know, one of those numbered ones.
I don't, yeah, I don't know that it has to be one of those, I guess, but I think any, 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 any professional development. Like, you know what I'm saying? Any, I don't know, however many hours we want to say, a year, whatever. I'm, I'm kind of that being a policy as well.
So some kind of professional development piece. But I think it should be all of us. I don't think it should just be your, your officers. Because who knows? You could be an officer next month or next year.
I guess what we're trying to think is like, if you're going to be president, you better have taken CBA one-on-one.
Well, everybody should.
Saying if all of a sudden, we have a reshuffle and now we have a bunch of new board members, nobody's taking it. So I guess there could be language that says less under certain circumstances, but to at least know that when we have people coming on, that we aren't having, you know, uneducated board members now trying to run the board meetings or doing things of that such, maybe. such. Maybe they would have to require them to take a few classes before they can have an office.
If you're going to be in this role, then you take this, it wouldn't take much to look through and see what classes are specific for each of these and kind of tie it to that role.
Mean the president or the vice president?
But the real it is, those classes, if, if you just take the 100 level classes, they go from anything from finance to public, public, to me.
Open act, open meeting act.
No, but to me, it doesn't have anything to do with the office that you hold. It has to do with what you want to learn to be a better school, school board member. That's how I look at it. You and I had the conversation, there were years, I went to the conference, I was the only board member that ever went and it happens because people's lives, whatever, people couldn't do it. And you go and there are some districts that the whole board goes and the superintendent goes and all of that. If you, you, you can become a better board member the longer you sit at the table and the classes that you take. I just don't think it has anything to do with the office that you hold.
I agree.
I just think the more, it's just even the county school board meetings, the different things, it's all of that that helps you be a better board member.
I would agree with you for the most part, although I do think that like the president's role is much bigger role because they run meetings. Like, there's a lot of things that I wouldn't really necessarily know, like what, what needs a roll call vote, what needs, you know what I'm saying, like whatever. So, I feel like there's probably specific classes for stuff like that, more so than there would be for the secretary. I designed some stuff.
There are specific board president workshops.
There are.
Different, they're not just MAS B, they're, they're different ones. So, when you're in the role of the board president, you should be taking those classes. That's what the board is looking to do. But until you're in that position, until you choose that that's the position you want to hold, I don't know why, I don't know why you want to be, why you need to be taking those classes.
And I guess what you're saying is that that's making sense. So, maybe it could be more along the language of if you do get this position, you are committed to continue the professional development that may need, or at least you work on it because.
But I think that, I think that holds separate from what this policy talks about the opposite. I don't think there's, my opinion, there's anything wrong with what any of the offices say that the people have to do in those positions. But if you.
But hold on.
I'm just saying that's my opinion. But if you're looking at it, you want something in policy, again, that states you want 101 to be at the minimum, you want if you are the board president, you, you need to, whatever words you said, the, the continuing education, learning to do that job. Because the reality is until you sit in that spot, you have no idea how to do that job.
No idea.
You know, and there's.
There's things that need to be learned.
There's superintendent, board president, I mean, I, I did all kinds of things over the years, there's all kinds of things you can find to do to help you better in that spot. If that's, when you choose.
Well, it could be, it could be public speaking. I mean, you're, you are, you have that piece, it could be, I took a class when I started about the, what is it, Robert's Rules of Organizational, you know, Brian got a book and, you know, we went through that and, and how to run a meeting. So, there are, there are other ways you can educate yourself besides doing those programs that are out there by MAS B.
Can I ask the board this? If you're going down the road with you want minimally Board 101 to be the president or any officer.
Anybody.
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 Anybody. What, number one, you think about what, what is the consequence if someone says, I don't need to take them? Because the only way you can remove a board member is by the Bill of the People or the Governor.
Well, there is no consequence other than the disappointment that you don't want to do it.
And you can't be an officer if you don't take a school board 101.
That's what I believe. I think we should have.
Well, we have to put that in policy then.
Right, we would have to put that in policy.
But what did you do if you have, and I'll go back to when you got on the board, we had four new board members come on board.
Yep.
And I don't think you had 101.
And that's ultimately. I didn't when we started, but I did after.
And so, that would prevent someone from being in the office. And then if you have the term limits, that could now put a, I just think you need to think through the, the dynamic because in my 10 years, I think I, I have worked with 26 different board members in 10 years.
Which kind of fixed that.
Yeah, exactly. I believe that is.
But I think that, and I'm not saying that's a negative, I'm not saying that's a negative. What I'm saying is life has happened.
I think we can if we make sure that there's a revolving leader so that the leader, maybe there's.
But you know what, I'm going to make another.
A different feel on the board.
With having a revolving reader, a leader, you have inconsistencies because everybody will run things a little bit different or whatever. And quite frankly, that means Brian every year, let's just say you rotate this, whatever.
It's three years, it's not every year.
Well, it could be every year because we could vote it that way.
Right, and it could be like that now.
Then it's, then you don't have consistency.
It's always been in that situation that it could be a new member or a president every year.
It can be like that every year.
It could be.
That is just real.
I know, but.
So, to, to say that that puts a burden on Brian, that's the reality of sitting at this board table, that can happen. Sorry, but it is.
Yeah, that's, I'm fine with the term, I'm okay with that, I think that's fine. But I, going back to the education piece, I feel like you're going to get, you'll get more individuals that are serious about being on this board if you, if you have continuing education stuff in your policy.
Absolutely.
Part of me, Angela, with the continuing education part, aside from the 101, I, I had the conversation with Candace about going, that, that conference every year is outstanding. And therein, if you make a commitment in your, in your policy, that attendance at that and, and whether it's you can go every single day, because there was the year Tracy, Kyle and I, we split up, you know, Kyle went to a couple of things, Tracy and I went to different things. So, when we came back to the board, we each had something to bring back. To me, I think that's, that conference is huge, there is so much to learn, there is so much to garner from talking to other people that are on boards of education, you know, things they deal with, all that kind of stuff. If you want to talk continuing education, that's our biggest continuing education right there.
Yeah, but not everybody can make that. There was one in McComb County and there's plenty of virtual things that you can.
Those are MAS B, I'm talking about the actual conference.
The conference is awesome, but I love the conference when I went last year, I can't go this year.
Me neither.
Or else I would be there a minute, but I, but there are so many other options, like you said, like online, like I just think if you're making the effort to do it, to somehow continue your education.
Maybe just like one class every two years, it doesn't even have to be.
Or could we?
Or workshop, it doesn't have to be the CBA, it could be like attending the workshop that you're speaking to.
Or could it be even our.
Or the McComb County Board meeting.
Because they always have an educational piece.
The MIS, yeah, the legislative things are big.
All those things are extreme. We have some board members that do not go to anything, they're not going to the education and they also aren't going to any of the extra.
Some districts, right. When I turned to, was it Cindy or Cynthia at the MAS B the other week, two, three weeks ago, she even said that there's boards where they're all certified, like the entire school board is certified, that has nine credits, nine of the MAS B 100.
And they're all reversed by the amount of.
And there's a huge bonus of pride in that and there's, they, you get honored as a district, like it's, it, we can go up high if we could try to incorporate that.
Go up high.
Just in the community of school districts, if we are all certified or the more people we have on the board that's certified, it sounds like it's its whole, I mean, Mr. Wong, you, you know what I'm talking about, right?
Well, I know from.
Oh, yeah, at the last, at the May meeting, they recognized, I believe it was some members from Clintdale who reached that level, they had, I think it was Roseville that reached as a board, but yeah, it is, it is a sense of pride that as a school district, you could promote, it's a confidence to the community that you, the people sitting here are confident. Not that you guys aren't, don't get me wrong, but it's another, it's another validation that you invested in because you are the fiduciaries of the dollars that this community gives you.
Well, and I think that's when we, what was that, two years ago, I think, when we committed to paying for classes because for the longest time, and that's some of those, some of those districts over time, they had budget line item that paid for that stuff. We didn't have that for years. If you went to something, you were, you were paying for that class yourself. So, I think by making that commitment like we did a couple of years ago, you could put something like that into policy that because we've made the commitment that you need to take at least two classes a year, once you've done 101, something like that.
Well, and the state reverses all the CBA classes.
They do.
101.
Now they do, yes.
Yeah.
So, now, like as a district, it would definitely be unofficial for any of us to take as many as we could. And like I do agree, there are sometimes I feel like some of the information, I'm like, oh, I feel like I already know so much on this and I know Candace went and took the curriculum one. And I was like, I think I'm, you know, I got that. And she came back with quite a bit of information that I was like, wow, I really do wish I would have still said in on that. So, even though we think we may know, there are plenty out there and like, of course, the law is changing and everything is going so quickly now with education that there might be some new stuff out there that we definitely would need to be educated about.
I think the laws and legal stuff is a big one because that's constantly changing.
But this, I, but I think these, I agree with Margaret, are nothing to do with their duties for the most part.
Yeah, that's what I agree.
This is a general idea of what is required just as a board member.
Right.
As a board member. So, I don't know if that would be like.
I know, I was just, I pulled up our.
Board graph in the beginning or somewhere else.
I was just pulling it up here to see if there was something, I'm looking at our board policy here to see if there was something here that just said general duties of a board member or a, there's one that says roles of the board member. Is that this one? That we would want to add this somewhere, something about, I, I agree with the PD piece. Whoever made the comment about, you know, we, we ask our staff to be involved in PD, you know, we, Brian takes PD, I don't think it can hurt us in any way to get further educated in what we're doing. And things do change and things are different than, you know, they, we need to, we should stay current in what's happening and what's going on, so.
And Mr. Wong.
I think it, I think it would fall if you're doing this.
I know, I was looking.
Under the roles of the board, if you want to educate, if you're talking about educating yourself.
Yeah.
It's there because in that, you talk about what your roles and you're doing curriculum, budget and so forth. You put a section in there.
Professional development.
Professional development. I would ask if you want, if the parameters are, you know, 101 requirements, language to continue, let me work with the attorney to draft something that legally is going to stand up because you will have, there will be a board member that says, no, I'm not doing it. And there's not a whole lot.
Lot you can do.
You could publicly say, we don't agree with you and you can.
Correct, you can't do anything, they're still, they're elected.
It's encouraged too.
But you as a board.
But could we put in there, in language there that you cannot be voted in as an officer?
I would have to check.
Check with the attorney.
I would have to check the attorney because you, you have to have the out because, again, I'll go back to 14.
You can do that.
There were four board members that came on this board.
That would not have had.
We would have an open seat because none of them would have been held.
Or it could be like you have to have it within like.
Within two months of.
Of getting it or something, right? If you don't already have it, you would have to have it done in a timely fashion, couldn't wait a year.
Because we do that with our teachers.
You know.
You know, we're doing that with our teachers.
If you want to take up that role, I mean, then you're taking it seriously.
So, if you want, if you want professional development in that, I would more than happy to work with the attorney to draft it so it's legal and what you can and then bring it back and the board can, you know, discuss it. One of the items I wrote down that's really not in PD was the term list, do you want me to explore that?
I would like to explore at least the language.
Just explore it and see what they say. Is that good?
They might say we're crazy all the other, I don't know.
Yeah, they might. Is there anything else you want to look at?
I have my thing, it's a side thing though, sorry.
Go and then we'll.
So, the situation when I was, when I was elected on and there was that month gap that I was off.
Yeah.
Is that like something we can control or no? Because that was a bit odd.
No, because your term ended when that election happened.
Yeah.
You filled that seat until the next election date. So, you were, you were an interim person, so, and then you didn't run for that spot that you had been sitting in, you ran for the six-year heard. So, the person that ran for that gets on immediately and you come in January. Had you run for that.
The same seat I was sitting in.
You would have stayed.
You would have.
So, why do the start, why are they so different? I understand the terms for two.
Because, because the position that you were appointed to was a vacant position and you are on that until the voters approve. And then whoever they approve is the, the person that, that fills that position.
So, why wouldn't all the positions end on election?
They do. All of the positions are six-year positions, it's just so many people have quit over the years or whatever, resigned over the years, that, that's why they're all different terms, like that's why they were all different terms.
You didn't.
Gotcha.
You didn't just run for election on a spot that someone decided not to run again. They left in the middle of their term, their term was still left.
Right.
And so, you filled that spot until the next election came. But when it came time for you to run, you ran for a completely different available seat.
It wasn't available until.
So, that's why you were off of this seat.
Okay.
And then take your seat in January for the spot you ran.
The new term starts over January 1st, whereas when you're filling in, it goes in right after election.
And there's really nothing you can do about the district because that's the election.
It's all on how that works, okay.
And it's designed that you, if everybody completes their term, it's designed that you never have a quorum of the board turn over.
Right.
But because people, again, personal reasons, need to leave, whatever, that's when you have the nuances that we have.
Otherwise, it should be three, two, two.
Yes.
Three, one year, two the next two, that's how it goes.
Okay, Angela, you said you had one other thing?
Yeah, I actually, I don't know, I kind of, I guess it says here for number three for the president's role, it says serve as the board spokesperson unless another person is designated. What does that mean? Does that mean to us, like speaking to the press? I guess I feel like our president should have a more vocal presence in social media and to the press and, or whomever.
I have talked to the press, just so you know.
Okay.
I have, I've met with, one time Ryan and I sat down, I forget who we talked to, I've had a press send me an email asking for information, which happened, nothing recently. So, I do, I, I have personally talked to the press.
Okay. Then maybe, I don't know, maybe should put press or media in there? Because I guess I think spokesperson is just so vague. Because I guess I think spokesperson is just so vague.
It's, it's, the intent of that is when the board has, takes action, the, the president is the point of contact for the board's voice. Whether it's negotiation positions, whether it's an incident that happens, something tragic that the media is, it's not seven people talking to the media and then, you know, the media will ask you questions and try to catch you or, you know, lead you down a road and rabbit hole that you don't want to go. So it's intended to keep the consistent message of the district. Where it says other designee, um, could be, I'm going to defer to the district attorney because it's a very sensitive issue. And that is our point person. It could be the superintendent, it could be, um, it could be, you know something, I'm out of town, Angelo is vice president, I need you to step up, but that's one of the roles of a vice president stepping up in the absence. I need you during this time to be the spokesperson for the district. So it's written broadly to cover all the possible scenarios, but in essence, the president is the spokesperson for the board.
Like, for example, at our board meetings where I sometimes, um, at the start before we start, I'll say, okay, we're going to do a moment of silence to acknowledge something. Or I've also done, um, when we've made statements regarding certain things that have done, I would make a statement on behalf of the board, and I've done them at the board meetings. So there's another place, I think. Also emails. I'm the one who replies back to the emails and then I give you guys.
Okay, I understand that part. I guess, I guess what I'm just more asking is I feel like we as a board need to have a voice out there on social media and in the newspapers, meaning the voice. Who's going to do that on our behalf? Right now, we have board members that are just talking on social media on their own, sharing information, when we all agreed at a workshop that nobody should be sharing information on social media. However, we still have individual board members talking through social media, sharing board information, like, and that should be coming from our president, not, and, but our president's choosing not to.
Because I don't subscribe to Facebook.
Okay, so what do we as, I guess now I'm asking us as a board, what are we going to do?
Unless we want to do that. When we have a president that doesn't do that, how do we fix that, I guess, or, besides, of course?
I think right here at the board table is where the president needs to have her voice and not on social media or responding to petty things. Okay, then how do we as a board still feel about individual board members speaking out on social media?
We discussed that at the other meeting.
At the workshop.
Okay, so what do we do when people still do it?
Even though all we can say is, I'm sorry, I don't want, you know, we request it as a board, but you can't stop them, it goes back to.
Well, you can't stop someone.
Or you and the president shouldn't be encouraging them to do it because you don't want to do it, correct?
No, because I don't have them on my Facebook. I don't have, I don't have a Facebook, so I don't have access to it.
I think.
I know, but I don't feel our president should be telling other board members, I don't have access to Facebook, so you can feel free to communicate.
I will admit, but I made one comment to Candace because she wanted to put informational, that's it. That's the only time I've encouraged.
I know, but we're perpetuating the idea that it's okay for everybody to keep doing it.
Yeah, that we don't.
So I, so I'm asking, where do we stand? As a board, I guess. Because I guess, if everybody's going to be speaking out on Facebook, then I feel I'm, I'm the only one listening to the rule.
I do not speak.
Yeah, but I feel like we should, if, if only a few of us are not speaking out, maybe our voices need to be heard as well. That's where I struggle. But because we should have our president who is speaking for all of us with one voice.
So I have to monitor all the Facebook accounts?
Well, no, there's certain topics that have Facebook topics or hot topics within our district that need to have a canned response from the board president in a sense, or a canned response from a designee of the board.
But how do I know that?
They need to come to the board at a meeting and voice their opinions and it's, instead of on Facebook.
Thank you.
If they have an issue.
Yes, they're doing both.
Well, we can't control what they do on social media, I'm sorry. But that, if they have an issue that needs to be brought to the board, then they have a forum right here to bring it to the board. Go ahead, Margaret, sorry.
Don't go. That's all right. The, the board president is supposed to be the spokesperson for the board, okay? And we, we should not be saying things out on social media with the ridiculousness that happens out there. But the ridiculousness that happens, it doesn't mean that we can't come back to this board table and address it. That's been one of my biggest things that drives me crazy, that we don't address it. And public comment that happens, you're right, people come to the meeting, they public comment, when they say stuff that is not accurate, that is false, we don't come back the next meeting any longer and address it. That's where, that's where your role of your board president, or even in your items of interest, if you want to.
Address it.
To address that sitting here at the table. But we should not, none of the social media.
But I feel like we could put out fires before we have a bunch of people showing up here.
Not, not, because not all of it is necessarily ridiculous. Most of it is, but some of it is looking for information. Do you know what I'm saying?
Like the Just Ask tab or the hierarchy.
Then we need to reiterate every meeting about our Just Ask.
I agree.
We need to keep putting that.
No, I agree, but I, I think that it would be nice if there was necessarily a presence on social media where maybe we do just respond with the, hey, here's the Just Ask link.
Which is what I recommended to Candace.
You know, which is, I think that's the board president's job.
She doesn't have, but she doesn't have acts, she's not, she's not, she's not signed up like that.
I would have to join and there's, do you know how many guys, do you, and I've looked, do you know how many Facebook accounts are related to this district?
Yes, because we're all on Facebook, except for you, Margaret.
I have a Facebook account.
I think it's not allowed in all of the town.
It's my family.
Well, and, but see, but Kelly, that was going to be exactly my point. Some, some of us are not allowed on it, so.
Correct.
So that's why you come to the board.
I assure you, if you answer things the way they don't want to answer, then you won't be on, I assure you of that.
Well, exactly.
But, but it doesn't mean that until then that there shouldn't be some kind of, I, I, I kind of agree that there, this is the new, this is the new way.
It is.
Informational.
So then where do you go? Twitter, Instagram, uh, do you have to do all of them? I mean, we have a website that has interactive thing.
That's what the district has signed up for. We as a district have decided to include parents and students on all of them. And when we decided to do that, it is our job as a district to be monitoring them and being a part of it as a board.
What if our board president had, like, if her own, uh, or he in the future, um, actual, their own little, what do you call it, where they, you never know who's going to come on. Anyways, spotlight on our district, you have your own little message from the board president on the district page.
I, I, we talked, I was going to say that, we, because you and I talked about that. I was going to ask Brian when he does the next, um, our, our, what is it, our, uh, the, the paper you put out, the newsletter, that maybe we have a spot on there that says, you know, from our board president or, you know, and I can just recap things.
To what point?
Well, and I guess that's the purpose, why would we do it?
We're going for questions if we have them.
Okay, one, I heard what you were saying, Angela, that we are using these tools to contact parents and guardians, whatever. But the thing is, if you want her to have a presence on there, it would have to be on the Richmond School District, not on a page that is owned by parents. It would have to be on our page, not responding on a page that is owned by somebody else.
But as long as there's a voice, a voice out there.
Well.
Somewhere, because we've had many, I mean, and recently it's been much better, but there were many times where there were a lot of comments on our own Richmond Facebooks from really nasty, negative people that should have been shut down long before it got as far as it did. Okay, and if there was more of an action from the board, and we all saw it, we all saw it, we all read it, even as a board, most of us. But we didn't jump in and say anything either because there was no protocol set in place to say, this is what we should be doing when things like this happen.
But our protocol was set in place.
Now, there is a protocol set in place, I think comments are immediately shut off, correct, whenever we think it's going to be.
No, I'm saying there was protocol in place for the board president to address those things. I mean, I, double, there's lots of times I share, this is what was said to me, that was said, we, we need to address it, we need to put it out there, and that's what the whole Just Ask came from.
Right.
That's why we did Just Ask.
I thought so on that, I agree with Margaret on that. The piece that I'm, I'm going back to, when you guys are talking negative, what site are you talking about? What Facebook? It's some, what is the, what is it?
Truth and transparent.
If I, as the president, if I don't, if I, let's just say I'm not allowed to be on it.
You won't be there.
I know.
Deb, that's why we just said, if you had, if you had what Kelly just said, a presence yourself, you don't have to be on the ridiculousness.
Well, I know, but I won't know what the issues are because I both have our obligation to tell me.
Oh, for you to tell me.
We tell you every time.
Every time.
I tell you whenever there's an issue.
I do too. No, but it hasn't been, I mean, we're not talking, guys, here a ton of them, that you've told me things.
I never tell you.
I know.
I'm not, I mean, I, I, I never really talk to you, I guess, I just.
I tell you every time there's going to be a mass of people here.
But you know what, Angela, you said it and then we don't have it.
That's not true, we've had a mass of people every time I've called you and said, you need to be aware. Now, there's been many times I've called you and said, stuff's going on, I don't know how they're going to handle.
After this meeting, Eric will all know.
What? I mean, I just, for me, I just need some direction. I don't have a problem doing it, but I'm not going to know, then you have to let me know what's on there. And I will then make a point to make sure that we address it.
You could put out a supervisor's statement and then relay it to whoever runs the Facebook page, so you're not getting on there and have it posted, you know, from the board president, da-da-da-da.
Like public comments, I got that one, Margaret.
Because you don't.
I have, but I haven't lately, I'll agree. I will agree with you. I should have done one last week, actually, and I did not. And I will make a point, I took a note, I will make a point to make sure that I do.
I, I will say this, the voice of the board is heard through its minutes. So if you want to make a statement.
Yes.
Everybody here at this board approves the minutes every week. And nobody ever aware has said, nope, the minutes are wrong, I'm not approving them. So when you vote yes on that, you're saying whatever's in the minutes is what the voice of the board is. So my two cents or advice, if you're going to make a statement, it needs to be here because you all have to vote and say, yeah. So it could be a prepared statement that we add to the minutes so it's officially in it.
Which I've done, we've done that before.
But I'm thinking it's more just like, you need to follow our chain of command.
I agree.
You need to contact your superintendent in this situation. We all do really care about you, we are trying to do our best for students, please be patient, get a hold of your superintendent, those kinds of things. Not like, we as a board are thinking this and that, that's what I'm asking Deb to do. I'm asking her to say, we are here, we are listening and we're working on it. That's all they really want. Most of them know we can't give them answers or solutions. They just want to know they have our ear. And I feel like right now on social media, our board doesn't really have a presence. And I know our Just Ask has been taken off, maybe that is on our Facebook.
Our Just Ask is back up, isn't it?
But isn't on our Facebook, maybe that needs to be on our Facebook rather than our website, maybe that's our symbol of the board or both.
Something from the board president right now, some, you know, well, after, maybe after our organizational meeting, but can have, um, I mean, whoever is president.
Okay, here's, here's all this last thing I'm going to say. What, what Brian just said, and I say it all the time too, your, your chance to speak is at the board table.
I agree.
Chance. And that's why we changed items of interest from members of the board initially when we created it, was to talk about neat things, I went to the play, I did this. In January, we changed that, that's where the raves came in. So the items of interest from the Board of Education, that's, that's your time, whether it's, you want to make a statement about a, a dress code issue, why you're going, why you can't support something, or why you're not going to vote to spend money in this direction, that, that's where that comes from. And that's where voice of board members is.
I, I agree with you, however, the way of the future is social media. I do feel like we may need a little presence on there.
I'm, I'm not saying.
But we do have one as a district, not as a board.
I'm not as a board.
Do we need one as a board? Do we need to open, I, I don't want to add another.
Not a page, but a presence if you are, or whoever's the president.
On what, on the district one?
Yes.
Okay. But what am I going to put on there?
Just like sometimes it's like, somebody answered.
Love that you guys just won the championship, great job. On behalf of the Board of Education.
Remember what we do when we do our raves?
A little, a little, absolutely. I mean, I don't know, I'm very active on Facebook, I don't know, do you love the district shares and the district?
I do.
Okay, then I guess, then you have a voice, people see that, you know, our staff sees you're loving and liking what they're doing.
I think by being there and being present is another way of showing and not doing it on Facebook.
I agree with you. No, I, I don't disagree with that.
If our school is deciding to do both, I, I'm confused why we have people against Facebook when we as a district have adopted Facebook to the platform.
I will tell you why. And I've had my experience as an administrator on it.
And you're like making my kids like have to deal with Facebook, like.
I didn't make that decision.
The district has, so now we're all here together as a district making the best of it, so that's what we're doing as a district, so you've got to expect the board needs to be seen there too.
Fine, we can deal with that. But my opinion with Facebook is you have people on there and they're the same people all the time, and it's, they won't come publicly, they won't come and stand up to this thing, and they will complain out there. So as far as I'm concerned, they don't need, I should not have to respond to someone who can't come up here.
But you also have people out there that are saying really great, great, great things that need encouragement, and a simple little like or love through the Facebook goes a long way for them to continue to fight against the negativity. You know, I mean, they want to feel like they're not alone too and that we are listening to them when they are fighting for us.
So are you saying you feel like you can't like or love something?
No, I do it all the time, I'm talking about as a president and a voice of the president on social media. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so I need to work with Brian because I don't have access.
We got real far off on the policy because there's no way to put that in there, yes. Or it's in there apparently, but.
I will, I will.
Just, just make it however you want.
I will work with Brian about getting access because I don't currently have access to the district Facebook.
Can I make a recommendation?
Well, no. Or do I send it to Brian?
Can I make a recommendation to the board? Let me work with Deb.
Yes.
On first addressing, addressing the stuff that's brought to her attention, I'm going to call it the negative stuff first.
And you need to call me and let me know.
Because there is a way that we could, using our social media, get a response out there. Let me, let me just work with Deb with an idea and can we bring it back?
Back to that.
And then if that works, then we can expand it to the likes and loves on Facebook.
Well, right, well, I'm just saying, as you know.
Oh, I get it, I get what you're saying, but let's focus on, I guess, I'm trying to take baby steps here, it's on the weekend, achieve, is that right?
Okay, I think that sounds good. Okay, so, just so we could clarify, Brian, you're going to go back and get some legal on what we.
On those three.
Okay, I'm going to make sure that I address public comments the next week after, and then Brian and I are going to work on the Facebook thing. Okay?
I agree.
Okay, next item on the agenda is our raves. Danielle, we'll start with you.
I hopped up this afternoon at the book fair, um, at the elementary. I did it last year as well, but I was always, I felt like there was a ton more this year. She said it was about the same, but it felt like there was a lot more variety for the kiddos. And I was really impressed with how well Ms. Nichols keeps that, um, the inventory up as stuff was bought, and she had pictures of every shelf and then she was going through and already while we were leaving at the end of the day today, ordering stuff so that more could be shipped in the next couple of days so that kids at the end of the week didn't not get as much of a choice as kids from the beginning of the week, you know, so everything's been replenished. So she's really good, she's been doing a good job on staying on top of that and ordering in the middle of the week. So that was, that was really nice to see, and I'll be back there on Thursday to see probably the same selection, so that's pretty good.
Cindy?
I'm sorry, Deidre Mollsa?
Yeah.
Okay, Cindy?
Okay, um, I first off want to rave about several people, actually. During homecoming week, I had the pleasure of going and seeing some of the floats being built, um, you know, uh, Margaret and Candace and Mr. Bronsley joined me one time, but it was really, it was really awesome to see, and I just, I want to shout out to the class And I just, I want to shout out to the class advisors, which I think are Mr. Delore, Shagun, and Simone. Is that right? Okay. So, because I've seen them at every one of those things. So shout out to them for showing up. Also to the high school student Becky Ward, who's a senior every single time. And so I thought that that was really awesome to show like so much support. Also the families that held those things, they held the floats there and the gatherings there and all of that. That's a huge undertaking. The people that towed the floats and everything. I was super excited to see the floats come back. So especially, big shout out to our student rep Connor because I know he had a big part in bringing that back to, back here to Richmond. And it was, I thought it was enjoyed by everybody. I saw the parade, attended the parade and I thought it was awesome. I also just, I want to just quickly continue to rave on Connor a little bit because he also attended the Hall of Fame slash Hall of Honor inductee ceremony. He was a huge help. And I just think that he is, he was very helpful. And he's a really awesome role model and a really true leader. So thank you Connor for all you do for us. You make us look good. And then I just also did, I did, I did also go to the Hall of Honor and the Hall of Fame inductee ceremony. I thought it was awesome. It's a great tradition that we started. And kudos to everybody that put that on. Preston, Bronzlee, Cynthia, I know you guys all did a huge, were a huge part of that. So thank you for all that help. And lastly, I did go to the pumpkin fundraiser yesterday, unfortunately. I did go out my pumpkins there. I don't want to say unfortunately because it probably is really awesome. They really had very select items yesterday. I probably shouldn't have went on Saturday, but I was busy. So that is really cool to see that they obviously did a good job. And somebody came right up to me with a wagon, helped me. It was very helpful, it was awesome. So, good job.
That's it. Angela?
Yes, I would like to just, I guess rave about the band students and their pre-festival, I guess is what I think they call it. And they played with Elginak and Alma. The three of them together, they played their shows that they played for MSBOA festival competition. And the three different bands were able to do their shows and perform them in front of us. And it was amazing to see the camaraderie between three different rivals. They really was, they seemed to all be friends and to really enjoy each other and enjoy one another's company. And I just want to wish our band members, the high school band, good luck tomorrow. They will be performing for the MSBOA for division. And hopefully we'll see they do well tomorrow. And we'll find out by next week, next meeting. I'll let you know, keep you posted. I wish them good luck.
Is it East China?
Yes.
Yes, China, sure.
I am so sorry. I, I'm sorry.
Go on.
I forgot to mention, I should have mentioned, I didn't, that board member Candace and Angela were also both at the Hall of Fame and Hall of Honor inductee ceremonies. I realize you guys are maybe.
It was amazing. That was really amazing. I have to say, to be honest, on that note, I did not expect to get so teared up. The amazing stories that I heard from some alumni and the experiences as a young teacher myself was extremely inspiring. And I just didn't even know some of that talent was in our district. So thank you to all that was involved. And anybody, I encourage anybody to be able to try and go next year to really see there's some amazing talent in this district. Thank you, almost done.
Margaret?
Just to add on to Connor's rave, Connor was also the homecoming king.
We say that.
We have royalty sitting at our table as well. And I just want to do my shout out to Cynthia. The event, the Hall of Honor and Hall of Fame, she just did a tremendous amount of work. Greeting the people that came to the game Friday night and her making sure they got where they needed to be and all the conversations she had with people, getting them, getting their RSVPs and everything and just the setup. She really, really made us look good and she's a great addition to the district. And I was just very grateful for her. And yes, thank you to Connor and to Matt Mish, who was the other student who helped us at that event as well.
Also? Yes?
Yes, I have a few things too. First, thank you for the invitation to the Hall of Honor and academics. It really was, and I was teared up also. And one of the biggest things that I took away from that was when the volleyball coach had talked about how the school board back then approved them to go to the states or whatever it was that they won. At that time, it was unheard of and how much recognition came to the school board for that approval.
They approved for them to be able to even play the sport because the sport was new.
And that was 1974?
1978.
Eight seventy-eight. And just that so many years later, the recognition of the board and just, I mean, looking at us right now and the things that we're approving in fifty years from now, forty years, this could be us. I mean, we could be doing something that revolutionary right now. So it just really struck a note with me and one of the things to tear up about. Feel good about what you do. The other couple of things, thank you to Mrs. Chlor for inviting the choir to do the National Anthem at the homecoming game last weekend. Weekend's off, yeah. And then eighth grade band, Mrs. Shack invited the eighth grade band to play with the marching band at the game on Friday, this past Friday. And that was quite interesting and the eighth graders really, really enjoyed that. And the other thing too, I wanted to give a shout out to the band boosters for collaborating with the RMS PTO. This weekend, we now have some really nice decorations in front of the middle school. So it was a win-win. The PTO shared the monies to help their fundraiser and we got a lot of product for it. So it's really nice. And that's it for right now.
Thank you.
I just want to say, good job freshman improving the float contest. Thank the freshman parents for helping.
Also? I have a couple of things. I too went to the pre-festival exhibition that our band did. And I want to just extend it a little bit further. We had one, two, three, four, five students give a solo performance. So I'd like to acknowledge them. For the trumpet solo was Austin Morelli, he's a senior. Tanner saxophone solo was Jacob Pacito, he's a sophomore. Meliphon solo was Jalen Jaswyak, a junior. Color guard solo was Hannah Robinson, a junior. And our color guard, another color guard solo was Logan Boyd as a senior. It was really amazing. I know the other bands that attended had a couple, but we had a solo in every song we played. So I just want to give kudos to those students for getting out there and doing that and for Mrs. Shack and getting that all together. And they are competing tomorrow at East China Stadium. The event starts at six thirty. Richmond's on at seven fifteen and the tickets are five dollars. I'd also like to recognize all of the high school staff that was involved in homecoming. I do know the hours and the time that they put out to do that week. And it was a great week. A lot of good things happened. It's always been a good week here in this district. So I just want to thank all of our staff that was involved because I know there's a lot of work and a lot of time. And I also want to acknowledge the people involved in our, the Hall of Fame. I was out of town that weekend, so I could not attend. I watched it though on my way home. I was driving, well, my husband was driving. I watched the event on my laptop on the way home. We were on the road. So it was, I may not have been there, but I was there in spirit. I watched it and I was, I was just amazed. And I can tell you, because I'm going to read it in a minute here, the board's received a thank you. Just positive comments that I've heard. So whoever and however and whatever you did to put that together, awesome job. And I look forward to attending next year and seeing how that goes. I too bought my pumpkins this weekend.
I saw you there.
And there was cider and donuts from our choir group was there too. So a nice job by them. They were dressed up pretty warm on Sunday. But a nice job by the parents and the students that were there. Like Sandy said, you know, I pulled up the wagon, they pulled up the wagon, loaded it up and loaded it in my Jeep. So I really appreciated that too. So, thank you. Okay, next.
There was a really good selection on Saturday, just not to make you jealous. I know. I had sent me a birthday card.
Yeah, I couldn't do Saturday either. I prompted SAT and I wish, but there was still a lot.
I saw you leaving as I was coming.
Yeah, there was a lot there, so it was still good. Okay, next item on our board, Connor, so you can go home and go to bed. Our student board rep place.
Okay, starting off with the elementary school. NWU testing has come to a close. They have already begun looking at student skills to look at what we need to teach them next. Childcare has been very busy. We are averaging between seventy to eighty students during the afternoon childcare. Conferences and book fairs are coming up on Wednesday, October eleventh and Thursday, October twelfth. Fire, the fire prevention assembly will be held on Monday, October sixteenth. And the preschool pumpkin painting in the courtyard will be Wednesday, October twenty-fifth. The middle school, the Armist book fair is up and running this week. Volleyball is hosting cross legs this evening. On Wednesday, volleyball will travel Yale and on Thursday, football will host Armada. In the high school, manufacturing and date field trips have happened last week. On Tuesday, the bird tool in Chesterfield, students have the opportunity to learn about manufacturing, specifically welding, fitting, the overall business structure of the small tight knit company. Then on last Thursday, they visited the pond guy at Armada. Students had the opportunity to learn about all the manufacturing that takes place for the lights, fountains, solar panels, et cetera, that go into ponds, as well as the dry and liquid chemicals that are used. Students also learned that the pond guy actually does not dig ponds. Other notable trips coming up are the students going down with Ms. Christensen to get DECA up and running again. She's also heading down Fort Field with her classes to learn about the sports marketing and the business organizations behind the Detroit Lions. The MI Career Quest is a trip in mid-November that forty students will be attending to explore advanced manufacturing, construction, health science, and technology. Finally, McCall Community College Auto Scheme Days will be taking place in early December. EMT classrooms at the high school was approved by the state of Michigan EMS office. So class will now be running out of the building. Thanks to Sarah and Jeff for the help in getting the classrooms outfitted and certified. And then coming from the athletic department, girls golf competed at the MHSAA Regional today, ended up taking fifth. Football will play Armada for the jug this week as its rival week on Friday, followed by their senior night next week against Clintdale at home. Marcy volleyball went three and one at the McComb BCD Tournament at RHS on Saturday. Boys soccer won their first game of the season, four and two over cross legs on senior night. And they will play Yale in the district quarterfinals on Wednesday at five o'clock here at RHS. And then cross country had six medalists at Marysville, at the Marysville Invit last week, including four girls, and the girls took third place overall.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update. Mr. Romse?
I'm going to start with Von. Our plan is on November thirteenth, board meeting, Kim and I will present the final budget. But Von, we're meeting with Oracle at the end of the month to finalize all bills, to see what's left and then present the board and some options to look at for the funds. That's our, November thirteenth. District update. The district has launched its new website. You can see on the website, you can go to various schools and each school is slightly different. The tops across are customized to that school. The links in the middle are the same for all schools. For a quick reference, go to any of the department. You'll see the events in our facility use calendar. These are populated by that facility use calendar. So these are shown, if I'm in the high school, they are shown specifically for the high school on the district page. It shows all the events. We have other options, like we have live news feeds that are going out. We also have news stories that are going out and you can actually access all of this previously. With that, there is a new app that you can download if you want to receive notification for information. And then if you go to About Us, how to download the Richmond app, there's a little video. We already released it last week as a trailer, if you will, regarding the new website and so forth. The Just Ask, it is on the website. They have not still, I contacted them before the board. There's supposed to be a third button here that says Just Ask, but you can go to, under the board, it'll be Just Ask, Just Ask Us, excuse me. It gives you, you can click on the form. It pops the form, give it a second. Ask your question. On the Just Ask, you can see all the previous questions that have been asked. When you click on it, it expands to the district response that was previously provided. So it's a running list of all the responses. So again, the Just Ask is on the website. Like I said, it will be a third tab. I'm just trying to get them, it's a programming issue that they do that I can't do or the district can't do. As many of you talked about, the academic Hall of Honor and Athletic Hall of Fame ceremony was on October first. It truly was a, another jewel for the district to add to their crown of accomplishments. You know, in the program, it thanked a lot of people that were part of it. This board for approving the start of it. I do want to thank you for that. The Hall of Fame and Academic and Hall of Honor committees that chose the individuals. The Richmond Education Foundation with their part. Preston, Director of Athletics, Kathy Guinea, the custodial staff, particularly Ms. Darke and Ms. Martha, and the technology who did a remarkable job in that. And I'm going to echo, I think it was you, Margaret. Cynthia, thank you for everything you did. I don't know how, if we didn't have this position, how this would have been pulled off. I'm going to be honest with you. There was a lot of behind the scenes, so it was a remarkable, something we all should be very proud of. On the About Us tab, there is a academic Hall of Honor and Athletic Hall of Fame website and nomination. When you click on it, you will see side by side the two criteria. You can also see the form that is, you can submit for your nominations. At the bottom down there, you'll see the pictures from this award. You can click on the link and see the Facebook video that was livestreamed. You can also click on to get the program. Next year's ceremony is set for September, excuse me, Sunday, October sixth. Homecoming next year is the fourth, so it's the Sunday following. So the date has been set for next year. I encourage anybody who knows someone academically or athletically, click on the links to all the forms. June first is the deadline, I believe, to get it in so that decisions can be made. And the plan is to announce it in June, so that gives us more time for the planning. Being our first year, we were a little pressed for time. You'll also see on here what the board approved, the athletic showcase and academic showcase. This is a web-based version. As we're starting to launch this, probably going to take a little bit of a while. You can touch to begin, click on the academics, athletics. We're in the process of uploading the information there. You can get to academics and click on the Hall of Honor and it has the induction year. You can see that the individual from this year are on there. So that process is started and it's accessed anybody. So if you know people who should be in it, send the content to Preston and we will validate it and get it in the system. But this will take time to get it all updated. A second here, I'm going to just go back to. I too want to thank the band boosters and everybody who put on the pumpkin and flower craft show. I had an opportunity to go Saturday. There was a good selection Saturday. But I do want to give a special shout out to Tricia and Jason Millbrant, who coordinated the pumpkin and flower sale, and Sherry Gasko for cheering the craft show. I think there's a lot, there was a lot of craft vendors there, more than I expected from previous year, but there was a lot. They stood the wind and weather out there. It was a little chilly, but they did and so forth. I was the lucky recipient of winning the big pumpkin, so it's sitting right now outside the board office. I got to figure out how to get it from point A to point B to my house, so, but anyways.
I can take care of it for you.
You can take it to your house on your Halloween.
Exactly.
Just a couple of things. Transportation, I think it was right after the last boarder, we have added the Tiger Run, so a lot of the routes were dropped to sort of reducing numbers. So I do not lose any waiting list. So we have added that Tiger Run back. In a couple of weeks, I believe, Tammy, based on today, we should have two backup drivers on staff so that will allow us to run more evening events and schedules. So I will say, the rate of pay for our bus drivers is one of the highest. I look at others, they're a lot lower than ours. So that has attracted people. We have an application, I believe, that came from district that has privatized their busing that they want to come here because we have brought them back in-house. So we are making strides with that aspect of it. Free reduced lunch application. Those breakfasts are free and lunches are free this year through the state allocated fund. We are still required by our families to complete the application, especially those that have been previously eligible for free reduced lunch. This is critical to get the number of free reduced lunch eligible students because that's how our grant funds are going to be allocated next year. So if the number's low, we will have an impact on Title I and thirty-one eight funds because that's all based on your address. At the end of September, we did a little, kind of competition. Of the five hundred and forty-five kids that were enrolled in September, we received applications from two hundred and ten, which is thirty-eight point five percent. Of the five hundred and fifty-four at the middle school, we received two hundred and six applications for students, that's thirty-seven percent. And of the high school, five hundred and twelve that were enrolled on that day, we have one seventy-three, which is thirty-three point seven. Basically, in talking with Kathy, these are down from previous year. So I can't stress this enough to have parents complete the application, especially if you previously received free reduced lunch because it will have a domino effect on other things in the organization.
Excuse me, Ryan, can those be completed online in any way?
Yes.
For any online format? Is that like a link out?
Yep. And we could, we could actually have Kathy send an email to the community. There's the application menu right there under the food service, have free application menu.
And you could fill it out right online like that?
That's a preferred method. You can fill it online. It expedites the process. But we will take a paper application.
It only takes about like five minutes.
Because I didn't even know we had a link online. I thought I had to do it by paper. So that's good to know.
Yeah, it used to be that.
We can, we can maybe, we can work on getting the communication out because with our new system here, there's various ways we can get it out, whether it's social media, text messages, email, et cetera. October third, I sent a letter out to parents regarding upcoming parent-teacher conferences, which is this Wednesday and Thursday from twelve to three and five to eight. I can't stress this enough, parent-teacher conferences are an essential bridge between the home and school. It gets us all on the same page. Where we're seeing strength, it allows a parent to share their concerns in areas of strengths and weaknesses. Please plan on attending if you have children, parent-teacher conferences. Please plan on attending if you have children, parent teacher conferences. Last Friday, October 6th, I sent a letter to the families regarding upcoming parent, student parent and staff perception survey that will be released next week. I want to thank Ms. Staples for all of her work on this one with the committee that kind of worked with the questions. This input's gonna be a valuable tool for us to make improvements and become better at what we do. Student perception survey will be given to 3rd through 12th grade students, and it's a good chance for us to get from their impact. Many of the questions are the same, but we're looking at it from the stakeholders' point of view, whether it's the parent, the staff member, the student perspective. Parents have an option to, if they have any concerns, they're encouraged to contact the principals. If they want to see the preview of the survey, contact the principal, they'll set up an opportunity for them to preview. If parents do not want their child, this is optional, just says when we send the link out to parents, there's nothing forcing parents to do it, there's nothing forcing staff to do it, but we are encouraging it. But again, if they want, do not want their child, we ask them just to email the principal so we know when we do the survey, we can identify the kids that won't necessarily get the link or take the survey that day.
It's electronic?
It's electronic. It is in Survey Monkey that will collect, so we'll be able to look at the data and summarize. It does not ask for names, it doesn't ask for, it's all anonymous from that perspective, so we're not asking. There is some identifying from a race, ethnicity, because we're trying to see if there's categories that someone may have a different perspective based on that.
What are some other type questions? Just basic-
They talk about the safety, their educational resources, do they feel that their needs are being met from an instructional, behavioral, are there things happening in school that are preventing kids from learning that, from their perspective, we could be addressing like that? But again, the question's asking it from a parent's perspective, what they may be hearing at home, or what they see, a staff member who's living it every day, and then a student's perspective. You know, we have kids that kind of just watch things, and they have a lot to say, but may not say it, and this might be an opportunity for them to share it, so. We're gonna keep it open for, I believe, a week. Our plan is each building's developing their own plan for student, but in essence, you know, middle school might be beginning a second hour, let's have everybody take the survey. It's about 20, less than 30 questions that they were asking on this first, you know, this survey.
Does it get brought back to the Board, you know, the basic information?
I will, between Renee and I, will either, if it's relevant for a presentation, we can do it, if it's relevant just to send, here's the Board, here's the results of the survey, and maybe that sparks, but we will get the results to, just as we share them with our school improvement teams, because that will determine a lot of our decisions that we're gonna do.
So I have one question, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Since this is what you're talking about right now. You said you're trying to get the perception and seeing if there's, like, not issues, but seeing if there's something that we're missing, and from parents, students, and teachers. If there's no identifying information, how are you getting, like, the student belongs to this teacher and this parent, or it's just randomized?
It's more of the school environment that we're looking at. We're not going down to the classroom level. So we're looking at, like I said, if there's, like, one of the questions is phrased, and I don't exactly know it, but, "Are there behaviors that are preventing, that you know of, or have witnessed or perceived, that are preventing teachers from teaching and students from learning?" And from a teacher perspective, they may say, "No, I'm not aware." But we could get from a student, "Yeah, there are some things that are preventing me from..." And so it helps us at least look at things from a different lens. Again, a perception survey may not be, it's true, but their perception is their reality, so that's what we're trying to-
Is this completely in-house, or is this linked somehow outside anywhere to monies or grants or-
No, there are no-
Is it for school improvement?
It's for school improvement, for us to improve, but there's nothing that we are reporting to anybody, we're not giving this data to anybody. It is for the curriculum office and myself to meet with school improvement to figure out, how do we make it better? As far as the link, the link will be sent to parents via email to the district. I can't stop parents from taking it and posting it on social media. It's intended to be our parents. I could possibly see some parents who don't have children in getting the link somehow and filling it, but, you know, we're gonna, as with any data, when you've got your outliers, you kind of throw your outliers out and say, okay, where is the bulk of it showing? So there's some things, you know, like I said, we can't 100% prevent that from happening, but we're encouraging, we really want it just from our parents, Cynthia.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to this, because now I'm getting the legislative, this is the stuff that's so exciting. The House of Representatives, let's start there, and we'll do it a little different. The House last week approved Senate, or House Bill 5021. It revises the retirement plan system for new hire employees, and it defaults them into a defined contribution rather than the 401K. Right now, if I'm a new employee, I have 90 days to make my selection, and if you don't, you default to a 401K plan. They're flipping it. So part of that, I think investing into the, I don't know the reason, it was voted along party lines, take for that what it's worth, but it's expected that this will go to the House floor for consideration. Environmental literacy, there's a committee looking at House Bill 4961 that was introduced by Representative Rogers to create Environmental Literacy Task Force, to develop environmentally, environmental literacy model curriculums. It would establish a 13-member task force, they basically have one year to complete it. They heard testimony from the Michigan Environmental Council, a student from Mattawa High School, and a member of the Kalamazoo Nature Center that took comments on this. Basically, the questions during the hearing were beyond the scope of the legislation. Probably asked, "Why are you even mentioning this to me?" Because I'm looking at this as this could become a required graduation requirement for students. I don't know the context of the environmental literacy module, what they're looking at, they have a year to create it. On the surface, I am opposed to this as a district superintendent, I can't tell you what other organization, because it's so new, but that's why it's on the radar. House Bill 5081 and House Bill 5082, wild guess what you think these are about? It solidifies that requires districts to have recess. We have recess, but it-
Oh, my gosh.
It requires that, basically, in our district's time, we would have to count a minimum of 15 minutes. House Bill 82, 5082, says that we can't be punished and lose state aid for having recess. It also, I'm kind of astonished this is a bill that got introduced, but-
Who's Bill Vargo?
Introduced by Rep. Fillers, Brent, oh, there's a whole series of them that are introduced on here. But basically what it says is, and I find it very ironic that they got down to this one, or kind of crazy, I guess we will, it also talks about that the time that it takes students to put their boots on and coats can't be counted towards recess. So just as an out there, these are two bills that are pressing issues in our legislators that we need to address. There's also a bill, House Bill 4861, that would prevent school districts, I mentioned this before, but there's some movement, it's being moved out of committee and going to the floor, but would prevent school districts and certain athletic organizations, I guess, I'm guessing this is the MHSAA, from preventing students, athletes, from being compensated for receiving compensation for their name, likeness, or images. So I'm guessing if Nike wants to sponsor-
At the high school level, this is?
At the high school level, so if Nike wants to sponsor Connor, I can't do anything from getting you to get Nike sponsorship, I guess, so. Anyway, so that's a House Bill 4816, it got moved out of committee, and it's heading to the House floor. On the Senate side, Senate Bill last week canceled the hearing on educator evaluation, it's scheduled to be this week. This is the bill, if anybody would like them. What is so ironic in this bill, and you read it, and there's a lot of strike through, they're referencing things like individual school improvement plans, which do not even exist. It's a district school improvement, so they haven't even updated the laws that they passed previously, and now in here, but it's, it is, there's some concern on it regarding, because if someone, one of the languages, if someone doesn't like their evaluation, they could actually take it to arbitration, they could arbitrate every single evaluation, so take it for that, that will be very challenging if it goes. So this is the last piece that I know is on a priority to reduce. It does remove student achievement data as the requirement to be 40% in the evaluation. There's some debate on a different number, but this is one that we're watching very closely. House Bill, the Senate adopted a substitute for the House Bill 4341, which requires clean drinking water fund. It would require schools to put in a, have a clean drinking water safety plan and begin changing out faucets. It requires funds to be allocated in order for districts to comply to the Department of Treasury to get those funds. Again, this is heading back to the House for their concurrence, and if they concur, then it's on to the Governor, or they'll vote, and then it'll mount to the Governor. Senate Bill 23 changes workplace learning discussion regarding association, basically says if you have, I'm just kind of reading, because this is a little confusing for me, if you have student-based, work-based learning experiences, under the current law, you can count them up to .5 FTEs. The bill would increase that to allow it to be counted up to .75 FT, but we can't count more than an FT for a student, so the reason why it's still not a 1.0 for student base is because we need to make sure kids have the other graduation requirements on time. But basically, it would open the bill up to more opportunities for students to be participating in work-based learning opportunities. I will say, if this moves forward as it is, and we do have an increase, we're gonna have to look at a position, who's gonna coordinate these work-based learning and going outs of field. Right now, Andrea's doing that, so there are days she's leaving the high school to go visit these sites, but that will be something, and I know you did it as principal, Andy did it when he was principal, but if this opens it up, we're gonna have to be creative on that aspect, so. That is it for me.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comments, since the last Board meeting-
How about items of interest first?
I'm really having a tough time tonight. Okay, so let's go back, items of interest, Candace, we'll start with you.
I just wanted to put it out there, the Armist PTO is putting on the Blue Bash on October 27th. Separated between the 4th and 5th graders right after school, and then the 6th through 8th is coming in at, I believe, 6:30. And that's it?
That's it, thank you. Sandy? Kelly?
I just wanted to say real quick, I did get a chance to actually dive into the Envisions Math course a little bit over the weekend, because I had to help someone with homework. And it was algebra, even though I knew how to do the problem, someone didn't believe me. So it was helpful that there was a QR code there, and there was like a little video that showed exactly what I was doing.
Your corner.
Exactly what I was doing to convince a certain someone that I was correctly doing my algebra, so it was helpful. There was a couple times I was looking for examples, and I was really hoping for answers in the back of the book so I could work back on the problem, and that wasn't there anymore, but the QR code was helpful, so there was that. And then I just had a question about this bathroom online pass that seems to take forever for them to get approval, to go to the bathroom. I'm just, I guess I'm confused, because we've been using the bathroom for 100 years by raising our hand or grabbing a chunk of wood, and why it has to be one more electronic thing when in some classes, the kids don't even have their computer out, and now they have to pull it out, log on, get in and ask for a bathroom pass, and then wait. So that was my only concern about that whole thing.
Can I bring that back to the Board of the discussion, more detail on it?
Angela?
I'm all set, thank you.
Danielle?
I'm good.
Margaret?
I'm good, too.
I'm good, too. Okay, now we're going to public comments. Since the last Board meeting, I have not received any emails from the public, however, I did receive a card that states, "RCS Board of Education, thank you for your support of the Hall of Honor. I am humbled to be among the first class of inductees. Sunday's ceremony offered the chance to see the many improvements to RHS since my graduation. I'm excited to see the many more opportunities students now have. Being honored with many generations of alumni is a reminder of the strong foundation RCS provided and continues to provide. Thank you for supporting the honorees and all RES students, Amelia Miller." So I did receive that. At this time, any member of the public may address the Board. Please sign in and state your name, you'll have three minutes to address the Board. Are there any public comments? Being no public comments, we will move on.
Deb, can I think of a correction? 5:30 to 7:30 is the 6th through 8th grade Blue Bash. I think I said something else before, but it's 5:30 to 7:30.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to Section 8H of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, I move that the Board of Education go into closed session to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by the state or federal statute.
Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? This is a roll call vote. Candace?
Here, yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Margaret?
Aye, yes.
Sandy?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Deb, yes? Danielle?
Aye.
Okay, we will be going into closed session. When we return, we will be just adjourned.